Good evening. I'd like to call to order this, the regular town council meeting for Tuesday, January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. Please rise for a moment of silence. Of the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Allenson?
Here.
Armady?
Here.
Fishbein?
Here.
Laffin?
Here.
Laron? Tatta? Testa?
Here.
Zandry?
Here.
Chairman Cervoni?
Here. Thank you. Can I get a motion on the consent agenda, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve or accept the consent agenda items A through G.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda passes. Now we will have the public question. Counselor Testa, is that you?
Yeah, I wanted to just make sure I was on. When I did the roll call, I wasn't sure if I was connected. And thank you. Excuse the interruption.
You're here.
Okay, thanks.
We'll have the public question and answer period. Back row. Name and address for the record, please.
Mike Glidden, Palmeroy Avenue. I have one question for the town attorney. A question concerning the charter. Who is responsible for inspections of sidewalks under the charter?
I'm not sure it's in the charter.
I recall, I thought I read something, is it the town engineer or Public Works?
I think the primary department that handles the sidewalks really is engineering.
Because then my other question would be, for ADA complaints on sidewalks, who would be responsible for inspecting those complaints? Would it also be engineering, then?
The ADA coordinator would certainly act for the town and most probably would seek the assistance of the engineering department.
Okay, so they do that based, is it strictly by complaint or an annual basis? Do you know?
Sidewalks are being analyzed on a consistent basis. Basically, there is a sidewalk repair program. We also install new sidewalks, but a repair program occurs every year. We spend between two and three hundred thousand dollars every year on repairs. Part of that, of course, is to deal with complaints as well as the ongoing efforts to repair sidewalks on a grid basis and then repeat all the grids over again once we've gotten through them one at a time. So it's an ongoing annual process.
All right. Let's ask one more question. Just one other thing. Last meeting, a member of the public talked about concerns about the vents in Town Hall. And I was downstairs at the town clerk's office, decided to go into the restroom that he was referencing. I took a picture just so that the council can see it, because I don't know, he asked if anyone went down and saw this. And I'll hand it to the clerk. The buildup that's on this vent in particular, you could barely see the louvers. It's hardly defined. I know that, I know that we've heard so much is being done. I know, I applaud the council for establishing a maintenance committee to look at it, but you know, this is like another example of our failing infrastructure, our lack of maintaining things. It's just, it's a constant, you know, state of neglect. And I think that the council should, you know, you formed a committee, but you really need to get a proactive stance on some of these items. Because in the end, you know, you're dealing either with taxpayer dollars to do repairs, or you're dealing with taxpayer dollars if there's any lawsuits. So I hope that you look into this further. Thank you.
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Darrell Stancuna, eighteen, Old Village Circle, Wallingford. I saw this additional appropriation for thirty-one million dollars. And that was reduced from thirty-four million dollars for the purchase of what kind of work is going to be going on with this water treatment?
Are you talking about the ordinance that's on the agenda tonight?
Yeah.
That's for the new police station at one hundred Barnes Road?
Right. And I heard there's like some kind of contaminated water there?
No.
No? Okay, that was another reason I came tonight. But the main reason, I don't think this is a good idea. We've got way too many police officers in this town. And quite honestly, I think we need to reduce the force by like half. And as far as the armory that they have, that's a pretty big sizable building. And if anything, we should downsize to the one on the corner next to Michael Tretorio's back like in the eighties, the one that is under. There's no reason to increase this amount of money to, and spend thirty-one million dollars into investing into issues that this town doesn't have. There's nothing going on in this town. There's nothing going on. I mean, we're not putting up a big wall against the border or something. So this is just unbelievable amount of money, of our tax money, being spent uselessly. And this is going to be funneling into millions more on top of this. And this is just really a bad idea. We've got other real concrete issues to deal with in this town. We've got people that are homeless. You've got people sleeping on the streets. We've got people that are not knowing which direction to go, that are youths. And what we need to do is take that building and make it into, for half of it for the homeless and half of it for the kids, and get youth center programs set up there. Overpolicing is not going to be the solution. Arresting people, the governor just announced he's closing another prison. So if you want to go out there and arrest everybody, they're closing down all these facilities. There's new technologies that we have to use besides overpolicing. We have way too many police officers in this town. There's nothing going on. So I oppose this strongly as a citizen and taxpayer of this town for fifty-three years. And I, there's other places we could use these millions and millions of dollars that we have. We could help people not get radio equipment and stuff like that and more bodies to pay to just sit around and park vehicles behind buildings. So I'm totally against this. Thank you.
There is going to be a public hearing on the police department funding ordinance. If you want to divert your comments until then. Back.
Bill Comer for Broadview Drive. I've got a question with upcoming budget. In the past, the chairman has sent out a letter to the nonprofits asking for certain information. Last year, there was an issue with one in particular that didn't want to comply. Is it possible that you're still going to ask the same from those nonprofits, Mr. Cervoni?
Yes, I believe the letter should be going out soon.
Okay, and I believe it was stated that the mayor didn't request it. Was that the case, Mayor?
I did not request such a letter.
Not the letter, but for the information, their budget and how they spent the money?
We request, budget requests, it did not include all of the elements that the council was looking for.
And you were happy with that?
I'd made the decision that that's what would be requested, and that's what we do.
And when did you change your opinion on that?
I don't think I've changed my opinion at all.
This is a quote. I know that you said that the minutes are a overview of it, but it said, because Counselor Fishbein asked about this like a decade ago or so, and this was your answer. It says, "We will ask that everyone requesting funds to provide budget and how the money is going to be spent." Somewhere between this statement and now, something changed?
No, that's part of the request of funds, that they indicate how they're spending it. There are different line items that describe what they will spend on. That's not true of every nonprofit, but it's true of most of them. But that is the budget request, how you will spend the money you're requesting.
So I'm hopeful that this year will be a change in the pattern and that all nonprofits will come up with that. The only thing is, and I appreciate the other gentleman talking about the greats, I went down there again today, just before this meeting, and that grill looks the same way. Brought up four times, four separate meetings over the course of three and a half months. Nothing about micromanaging. There's nothing about political micromanaging. Everybody up there, everybody up there had the opportunity to reach out to the proper people, in this case, Public Works or whatever, and followed up with it. But not one of you did. Not one of you, including the guy sitting in the chair, nobody did. So I guess that's acceptable, and that's the norm. And that's why everything's in the condition that it's in. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other hands, I close the public question and answer period. Before we open the public hearing on the bond, I thought I would. Counselor Testa? Before I open the public hearing on the bond ordinance, I thought I would have the Police Department Steering Committee make a presentation, and then we can go into the bonding ordinance and the public hearing.
Good evening. I'm Allison Kapaschinsky, the Chair of the Police Station Steering Committee, and I'm joined tonight by Police Chief John Ventura. Our presentation tonight is going to ultimately discuss the budget for the construction for the proposed police department headquarters at one hundred Barnes Road. Our presentation is going to answer three main questions. The first is, why do we need a new police department? The second is, how did we get here? And the third is, how much is it going to cost? So Chief is going to go ahead and answer the first question, which is why we need a police department in the first place.
Good evening to everyone. So I thought that I would put a presentation together and show the council, the people in attendance, and you know, those that are watching at home, exactly why we're asking for a new building, right? I don't think a lot of people have seen the inner workings of one thirty-five North Main Street. So I wanted to take the opportunity to show you why we're asking for a new building, and why we've needed it for such time, you know, sometimes. So that's the purpose of our presentation, you know, to provide insight into the reasons behind the request for the new police headquarters and what the needs of the agency are in the future. So if you remember, this is not the first time that we've been before you for a new agency. Back in two thousand and seven, Chief Tortenzio authored a report expressing the reasons why he needed a new police headquarters. Those issues that he outlined in that report are consistent with the issues that were expressed in a two thousand and twenty report by then Chief Wright, and the same issues that I will express tonight. So if you remember, back in two thousand and seven, we were set to put a new building on the Wooding Kaplan property. That building was to come in approximately twenty-two million dollars in two thousand and seven. Because of an economic downturn that continued throughout, that was a nonstarter. The project was designed. That is the project right there. That was the new police station that was going to be on the Kaplan property. That is the interior layout of the building. So just because that building wasn't obviously built, the problems that we experienced at one thirty-five North Main Street did not stop, right? So that's where we are now. We are in a converted armory. So just a little history of the armory. It was constructed in nineteen twenty. So in nineteen eighty-three, the town acquired that property and renovated into a new police department. So in February of eighty-six, police operations began in that building. And by nineteen ninety-two, if you read the minutes, Counselor then Geno Zandry inquired about utilizing the new Kaplan property, because only after six years, we had actually outgrown this property. We needed more room. So that was in, that was six years later, in nineteen ninety-two, we were asking for more room. The inside of North Main Street, right, so it looks cavernous, it's big, right? So the square footage of that, working square footage, if you look at that, is twenty-two thousand, four hundred and eighteen square feet, you know, twenty-eight thousand gross. But when you look at the building, the way that it was designed, it's very cavernous, right? There's a lot of empty space. The hallways are big, but the rooms are closed off. That's the main hallway that you walk down. That's the, you know, the sides. Although, those are offices. Basically, where you're standing or what you're looking at used to be a gym for, and they put a floor on top, put some sheet rock down and walled it off into offices. So that's where your main offices sit right now. So that's the main area. But that footprint hasn't changed. So for thirty-seven years, nothing has been done to add any size to that building. In two thousand and nine, at a town council meeting, Chief Tortenzio came before you. And in those meetings, man, he stated the following: "The building was constructed as an armory in the nineteen eighties, including the electrical and plumbing. The building is in operation," which is true, "twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Nothing turns off. Mechanical systems run all the time, and all the systems in existing building need renovations or upgrades. All mechanical systems in the building have far exceeded their end of life and is getting to almost impossible to locate parts to repair the systems with newer technology." Oftentimes saying that the mechanical systems are something that they've never seen before. Many times, we have people come in and they don't know what they're looking at.
Chief, if I could interrupt you for a moment. Your presentation is kind of getting lost on us, because even the best of our eyes can't read what's on that screen up there. Was there any intention of showing that on the screen behind us for the benefit of the public, and that didn't happen? Okay.
So I have a lot of pictures.
So if I may, it is presented on these two screens facing the public.
Okay.
That's how it's set up tonight.
And is it possible that we can get a printout of your presentation for the meeting minutes at the very least?
Absolutely. Yep, I can email it to everybody.
All right. Thank you.
Can you email it to us now? Because you're expecting a vote on this tonight, and we need to review this after the vote has already taken place. I don't think it's fair to the public nor to the public.
While that's being taken care of, perhaps you can continue, and we can come back to stuff if we need to.
Sure.
Thank you.
So in two thousand and twenty, Chief Wright, in his report to the council, he stated this about the electrical systems. "We have two boilers, and their life expectancy was past their serviceable life in two thousand and seven. In addition, the individual burners can be expected to need replacement after twenty-five years or approximately ten years ago. We have HVAC contractors look at our boilers, and they indicate they are well beyond their serviceable life and need to be replaced. Temperature regulation is done by screwdriver calibration. There are no thermostats in the building. It's either hot, very hot, or cold, very cold. You can't set a temperature in the building." Those are the boilers, where they sit now. They are an older model system. We try to be proactive. So the boilers that you see there for the heat, we tried to start those up this August or July prior to it getting cold. They didn't turn on. So we needed to have a company come in. The actually owner of the company came in, and it took him some time to try to figure out how to get the thing started. They did, but it's a constant struggle just to keep them, keep them running. I mean, they're just, if you look at that, they're older systems that you have, that we try to, you know, maintain. The air conditioning system is the same. It's in a storage room on the third floor, and the actual system is very old, right? So in the air conditioning systems, now that we have the summer months coming in the next couple, you know, months, we're going to have to contract the air conditioning company. And again, we have that company here at least once a month trying to keep the system running. It's not, it's not an easy system, and I have, you know, my training officer has been converted to almost building maintenance, unfortunately, because he, you know, runs over the top of all the contractors that need to come in. The most important thing in this slide you'll see is a cell block, right? So our cell block system is archaic. It's an old steel system. I will show you the pictures after this slide, but they're vertical steel beds. There's, there's cell blocks nowadays are plexiglass. They have different systems that can shut the water off. They have different systems that can monitor the prisoners that are in there. We don't have that. The Record Journal ran an article in two thousand and sixteen about Berlin Police Department. They had steel bars, and they replaced those bars and converted them to plexiglass for the same reason that it's a hazard to the prisoners, right? So they stated in the, in the article that they wanted to keep the public safe, but anyone else in their custody. So when you look at these cell blocks, there's seven cell blocks on the male side. Those are steel bars. The keys that you open those are an old school kind of skeleton key. There are no, you know, pass codes that will open those cells. There's nothing in the dispatch room or in the cell block that will automatically open those cell block doors. So if there's something that's going on, an officer has to physically go down there, insert the key into the, into the lock, turn it, and get the door open. Now, sometimes if people have tied things onto the bars, it becomes extremely difficult to try to move that door without having to cut whatever's there or the obstruction. To the right on the bottom, you'll see those little lockers. Those are the lockers for individuals' items. They're very small. You know, a lot of the things that people have these days, they won't accommodate, so we have to put it in overflow. The female cell block, right now, we have only one operating female cell. The cell block number one has not worked in some time. There's a serious plumbing issue that needs a complete rebuild, and it's just too expensive to embark on. So what we did is that we just strictly use cell block two. If you really look at the opening of the cell block itself, the beds are metal. I mean, those are metal beds with welds on them. It's a one-piece toilet set with a sink on top. I would say most of those, those sinks that put water out, they do not work. The most dangerous thing right there is that there's no separation. You can go underneath that bed. And oftentimes, we will have prisoners hide under the bed, or put something, put a blanket on, on top of them so you can't see, which forces an officer to go down there if they cannot get them out of there by verbal commands or going into that cell block to try to get them to come out, which is extremely dangerous. On the top of the cells, it makes it very difficult. There's a covering on the top of the bars with a more, another steel kind of area on top. And that's dangerous, because the camera systems in newer buildings are inside of the cell block, so you can monitor what's going on. Our cameras, because of the construction of the cells, are on the outside of the cell block. So those cameras, those, those are cameras that point into the cell, but the cells are dark, and it's very hard sometimes to see. So it is a liability. You know, you take, you know, take an example of a case in New Haven where a prisoner was injured, and it's a hundred million dollar lawsuit. I mean, that cell block is a lawsuit waiting to happen. I personally have run down there as a shift commander and had to physically cut someone down from the bars because they were trying to injure themselves. It is a huge liability for our agency to have that. Like I said, in some agencies with newer police departments, all the mechanicals are controlled either by a remote setting or by switches inside of the cell block. If a prisoner chooses to try to flood the cell block, what we need to do is, and I'm not exaggerating when I say this, is to find the smallest officer that's working and to put them through this door where they manually have to crawl into that space behind the cell blocks to turn the water off. That in itself is dangerous. But that's, that's what we have as far as being able to turn the water off or to address any prisoner issues that's going on. There is a pillar in the middle of the cell block. It's full, it's hard, it's, you know, it's concrete. So if an officer is trying to book somebody or is doing something, they can't see what's going on. There's, there's a visual, that thing behind it is a fingerprint machine, right? So there is a large pillar that is an obstruction of view for an officer. And even more unsafe is that most agencies with a newer cell block have a temporary holding area where the person, whether they're cooperative or extremely uncooperative, can sit in there and answer questions, you know, booking questions or things that need to be accomplished. We don't have that. Right here is where the officer sits, and right here is where the person that's being processed sits, and there's nothing in between them. So if you have someone that's not being cooperative, it becomes to a point where you need to have another officer down there because it's unsafe. Our locker rooms, our locker rooms have not been addressed since nineteen eighty-four. So especially the female locker rooms, we have six female employees today. If we were to fill our vacancies with females, I don't have enough room for that. Our male locker rooms are at capacity. If I was, I were to hire a lot more male officers, we would not have the ability to do that. So we would end up having to give somebody, I would have to give up a locker to try to put some people in there. But if you just look at the old lockers, they're, they're not large enough to accommodate the equipment that we need to use today, right? So you'll see people hanging their bulletproof vests on the outside of the lockers, their boots underneath the lockers, riot helmets on top of the lockers because they don't fit. Back when this building was first made, officers carried flashlights with batteries, big D-cell batteries. I mean, officers today carry little stingers that can be charged by a USB or a power system, and there's no power in any of the lockers. So a lot of the officers just have to charge their, their equipment at home or find someplace in the building where they can do that. And the locker room showers, there's two shower heads in there. It's an old system. There's no privacy whatsoever. It's just, there's no privacy anywhere in that locker room. The female locker rooms are even worse. And I say this not to, you know, we recruit all the time, right? It's like a free agency, fortunately in this day and age for policing. When we take a recruit or a prospective employer that I want to, you know, bring through the building, they see this thing, you know, they see these locker rooms. They see the female locker rooms. And for a female officer to walk into that and see that, it's not something that's appealing to someone, especially when there's a lot of other places that they now can go to. There's a lot of agencies that have a lot of newer equipment, newer, you know, buildings and accommodations. So, you know, for us to show this, it's just an older, it just doesn't work for us. I mean, it's, it's not a professional look. That's the shower for our females. There's six females, and there's one shower. In our patrol rooms, you know, for anyone that's ever seen our patrol rooms, I mean, we are overflowing in there. That right there is the sergeant's office. So that, there's three sergeants that, three shift sergeants that share that office. There are actually six sergeants, but they've run out of, of rooms. So the filing cabinets are full, and then we've moved on to banker's boxes. There's no room for them to put any of their, their shift paperwork or even the evaluations that they need to do. All their stuff is kind of overflowing. And a lot, you know, you have three lieutenants and seven sergeants use that one office. I mean, as far as technology in there goes, I mean, we have old typewriters for some of the paperwork that we have. There's three patrol desks. Those three patrol desks serve as area where the patrol officers type their reports, but also take their complaints. So I don't know how you would feel, but if I'm someone that just experienced a traumatic incident, now I have to go into this small room, and if there's a couple people in there, there is no privacy. So everyone is hearing what you're talking about. We can move some people around the building, but it becomes very difficult. So, you know, when you look in there, the public's first look at the police department, they first come into our building, is that room. It's not a room that I would say exudes professionalism, just because it's, you're just constrained by the size. Our server rooms are bursting at the seams. So that's our communications room. You cannot add on to that. And knowing what the future is, and a lot of technology is going to be pushed through for law enforcement. for law enforcement, we need more room. We're not going to be able to accommodate that. We are maxed out as far as our, our space. Our nine one one room is full. That is our server room. We have nowhere else to go with our servers and we have more and more systems that we need to use that require those servers in that space. Our body cameras alone take up a large chunk of storage that we just have to keep adding on to. Our exterior of the building, I mean, you don't realize how close we are until you see the pictures. These are all residential areas over here. We're, we're in people's backyards. I feel extremely bad for these individuals. They purchased houses on Academy Street and, you know, four, five times a day, we're chirping the signal, you know, the sirens on car checks as they're trying to sleep, you know? Twelve o'clock in the morning, we need to check the cars and we know that we have residents over there. We do our very best to mitigate some of the sound, but it's no, you know, sometimes there's nothing that you can do about it. It's, you know, even these properties over here, it's extremely hard to get out of this north driveway. Many times there's almost accidents for our officers who they just can't see the sightline is poor. Our parking lot, and there's one main strip in that parking lot that is paved, but the rest of the parking lot is not paved. It becomes an issue, especially during weather like we have now or when it snows. We have run out of spaces for our cars. I mean, there is no, when, when the building was first designed, we drove Crown Vix and there was not too many fleet vehicles that were employed at that time, right? So now we have more vehicles, we have more personnel, but we have less space to park those vehicles. We ended up having to move a lot of the vehicles. We relined the parking lot twice. There's nowhere else that we can go with, with our fleet. And like I said, the cars are bigger. We have SUVs. We don't have the Crown Vix, the sedans that were there before. So, you know, we try to get creative in where we need to put the cars, but when you have, you know, corners like that, there's not a lot of places that you can go. I mean, that's the north driveway. It's very narrow. There's a fence line on the opposite side and, you know, during inclement weather, especially snow, it limits the amount of space that you have, especially with the tower there. We only have three visitor parking spots in front of the building. There's two handicap spots and there's only three visitor parking spots that you can park into. A lot of people either park on the, you know, in the street parking, but during lunchtime, a lot of that is not available. So they end up parking in our back parking lot where they're not supposed to and it's no fault of their own, they're just nowhere else to go. Our gas pump, the actual physical pump itself was a hand-me-down from the electric division. That underground tank is about ready to expire at end of life. We only have a couple of years left. The underground monitoring systems are all in need of replacement right now. The parking lot itself, I mean, if you look at it, in order to drive, what ends up happening is our officers will check their vehicles, they'll be out of their cars, they have rifles that they need to inspect and the public will be driving through our back lot as that's occurring. It's not safe for the public, it's not safe for our officers, but there's nothing else really that you can do for that. Accreditation wise, I mean, there's a lot of things in accreditation that have coming out that we don't have the ability to accommodate. So if we ever wanted to achieve Kalia standard, which is the gold standard of accreditation, there's some things in there that we can't do because of the current building that we're in. So one of the standards, those are eighty-four one point two, is providing locked containers, vaults, lockers, or interior rooms to satisfy the requirements to kind of separate some of the evidence that you have, drugs, firearms, precious metals. That is our evidence room. It is full. We have to hold cases, you know, for retention purposes that, you know, you have a homicide, you have a sexual assault, you have a cold case that you can't get rid of, those stay on the shelves. There's not, you know, we can't move those and there's nowhere we can go with those. It's maxed out. There's nowhere to go. Police accountability bill, July first, two thousand twenty-two, everyone's mandated to have a body camera, right? So in order to do that, we had to take away the detective division evidence processing room and make that into a more, into a body camera room, the patrol room where officers will come in and dock their cameras. Now you take away a room, then you get that. Our detective equipment was, had to go into one room. So it is cluttered to the point of not much room for them to process things. So in conclusion, I, I think that in two thousand and seven and two thousand and twenty and even today, everything is, is kind of stayed the same, right? Chief D'Ortenzio said, in the process, the police facilities don't become obsolete overnight, right? So in the process, they impair police efficiency, right? They impair staff morale, issues of internal safety and most importantly, the public's perception of the department. And Chief Wright said the same thing, you know? He stated that we need a building and for the reasons that I expressed, and they haven't changed, right? So I'm, I'm not, you know, there's other people up here that will discuss monetary issues, disconstruction. All I can do is report on what we need, right? And what we need is, you know, obviously a, a building that can accommodate what we have. Right now, we are completely tapped out as far as space goes and there's really nothing that we can do to make the building better at this time. The mechanical systems inside of the building are failing. They're failing. We have tried and tried to keep them going. I cannot guarantee that we can keep them going anymore. I'm not a professional, but the professionals that come in all say that these systems need to be repaired or replaced and I'm sure that it's going to increase the maintenance line for our buildings because unfortunately with the age of the building and what we see, there's really nothing more that we can do but keep repairing. So with that, I appreciate your time and I'm available for any questions if you have any about what I just presented.
And we do have the rest of the presentation as well. Would you rather stop for questions now based on existing or continue? Mine's probably another five to ten minutes.
I'm not, I think the consensus is to continue the presentation and we'll, we'll ask questions when the presentation is done. Thank you.
And my presentation has been printed out in front of everybody tonight so you can follow along through a printout if you wish. Well, thank you for that, Chief. I do think it's important to remind ourselves, you know, why we're here in the first place. So I know my first tour of the police department was very eye-opening to the issues that they were facing and what needed to be solved. Part of the steering committee, we do have former police chief Bill Wright, who is on the committee. We've been very fortunate to be able to work with him as obvious firsthand knowledge as a chief, as well as Chief Antara sitting in on every committee meeting. Police chief Bill Wright is going to be taking us through the project evolution of, and I know that you touched on it briefly, but I think it might be beneficial to hear from former Chief Wright as well.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. So as a point of context, just to see how we got here today, just to walk back in time a little bit, in two thousand and seven, then Chief D'Ortenzio commissioned to report a study on the current police department at one thirty-five North Main Street, hired an architect to do a needs analysis on what policing would look like in the next twenty years. A very formal footprint and design was completed. The building was to be located on the Wood and Kaplan property. As the chief had stated, and I think there was an artist rendering there, the economic downturn of two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight commission that really is a non-starter. I don't think there was a lot of support for the building to be on that piece of property, I think generally, and it just became a non-starter. So what happened between then and now? So we continue on. Police department, as the chief stated, operates twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. We continue to operate in a building that was absolutely becoming much too small for the operation in the manner in which policing has evolved over the last twenty years. In two thousand and seventeen or eighteen, I authored a report to the council. I apologize, Councilor Allenson and to Councilor Carmody, you probably don't have that report, and I can get it to you, outlining the deficiencies in the building from two thousand and seven to two thousand and eighteen. And my recommendation at that point was to seek permission from the mayor to find a spot for a new police department. I think it's important to note that as part of that report, on a certain day, I was able to have seven or eight or maybe nine different architectural firms come in collectively and walk through the building with me, the building at one thirty-five North Main Street. And we talked openly as a group, a professional group, of what the police department needed, what my thoughts were, where we saw policing going. And in the parking lot outside, as we were looking at the facade of the building, collectively as a group, I noticed that these architects, who probably are competitors with each other on any given day, were acting really on the town's behalf collectively, talking amongst themselves about what they heard from me, what they saw themselves, what we really thought policing would be like. And turned around and really said to me, you can't do here what you need to do. We know, we see what you're trying to do. The building is constructed as such that you can't add a third floor, you can't go out either side, you can't go out the back, you need to expand. The agency is really maxed out in the building, as, as the chief illustrated with photos, and you need to make a decision. You need to move from here to do what you need to do to function as a modern, professional police department. That led to Tim Ryan and I riding around town for days on end, looking at raw land, existing buildings, buildings that could be torn down, we could renovate some current structures, and that led us to One Hundred Barnes. So I came back to you with the mayor's permission, seeking permission and funding to purchase One Hundred Barnes Road for the purposes of moving the police operation from one thirty-five North Main Street there. And from there, you gave us permission through a bonding ordinance to, one, purchase the building, two, to have the facility designed, which brings us here tonight. So the work has been done. All the creativity that we've been able to do inside of one thirty-five North Main Street prior to my retirement, I can't speak for the chief, but I'm sure he's working those same lines, all of that work has been done. There's nowhere else to go. We can't go up, we can't go out, the rooms are packed. The female locker room, as you saw, is an absolute disgrace and it's time now for this police department to have, for their work, for the benefit of all of us here, we're all town residents, we all live and work here. It's time now for the police department to move into a modern, functional building for the next thirty to fifty years before anyone even has to think about a renovation or anything else. When that time comes and what policing will look like then, we don't know, but there's a room there. There's room to go up, there's room to go out, there's room to expand and we won't have to go through this again. And I'm really passionate about it. You know, I lived in that building for twenty-six years. I saw what it was becoming. I tried to do the best that we could to keep it going. And really, I appreciate your time in considering the presentation that's before you. A lot of work has gone into it. I know there's a lot of questions. I'm really confident we're prepared to answer those for you. But I think it was important to just give you a timeline of, of what brings us here tonight.
Thank you, Chief Wright. Just a couple more pieces of information for these past projects. In two thousand and nine, I know there was a slightly different number shared earlier. The budget worksheet that I looked at in two thousand and nine estimated a project at twenty point two million dollars. That cost estimate was projected into a couple of different potential build years by four percent a year. So if you take that four percent, I found this very interesting. Out to two thousand and twenty-three, you're looking at thirty-five million dollars. So it just, to me, that was very eye-opening that this is the cost of what a project of this type entails. No, the projects are not apples to apples. One was a new build, one's a renovation. It doesn't include land acquisition. It also doesn't include the volatility of the market over the past couple of years as well. So that's just taking four percent straight out. So wanted to share that. And then just to touch base with the one thirty-five North Main sidewalk, just to elaborate a little bit, when Chief Wright said that you can't build out, that's because the parcel limits you to where you go. You have backyards against you on one side, you have the fire department on the other and you can't build up. It was looked into in the two thousand and seven feasibility study that the foundations would not support an additional floor. The existing one thirty-five North Main building provides about twenty-eight thousand square feet of space and our space needs assessment came back with forty-seven thousand square feet needed to properly fit the police station program. So. So once we acquired the building as a town, the steering committee was formed and we were tasked with seeing the, this project through design and eventual construction. The very first order of business, once we hired an architect, was to complete a space needs assessment, as I just mentioned a few minutes ago. This space needs assessment provided a roadmap for the entire project. It gave the architect an opportunity to work with the police administration to really understand what the needs are for the specific program. Our architect has a lot of experience in many different police departments, but those police departments aren't Wallingford. We might operate a little differently in certain aspects and one of those is projecting the future growth. So chief spent a lot of time going through different, basically his, his view of how this police department is going to grow once he has the space to do so. So that's not just number of bodies in the building, it's not just for number of lockers you need and number of parking spaces you need. But he took it one step further and looked into the different divisions and units within the police department to decide, well, we're going to definitely build up the detective division. So that's where we're going to provide extra space right now. So this is truly a building that the police department is going to be able to grow into over the next, as Chief Wright said, thirty to fifty years. During this time when we were completing the space needs assessment, we also had the opportunity of touring the North Haven Police Department. That police department, if anybody doesn't know, was recently renovated and added to. I thought that was a great experience to be able to view that and get an idea of how North Haven found some modern solutions to problems that, you know, our police department has been experiencing for fifteen to twenty years. From there, the architect and design team proceeded into design and we, the committee received review plans at schematic design, design development and construction document phases. And those are all different phases as you're adding more and more information. And by the time we got to the design development phase, Downs was brought on board and was able to provide cost estimates for both design development and construction documents. During design, we also obtained all required local permitting. From the construction documents, we were able to proceed into bidding. So the construction manager put those plans and specifications out for public bid. This was all done through our purchasing department here in town and obviously according to all purchasing ordinances and requirements. Once those bids were publicly opened, scope reviews were held for the apparent low bidders and once we had these actual prices, the construction manager was tasked with coming up with a guaranteed maximum price, a GMP. Though the GMP guaranteed maximum price, you would think it's mostly just cost, but it's also schedule as well. So this is a proposed schedule that is included in their guaranteed maximum price. With a hopeful bond approval tonight, we would be able to issue a notice to proceed by the end of February, looking at a groundbreaking ceremony the week of March sixth with site mobilization following soon after and looking at a police move-in date in July, two thousand So this is, I know this is a lot of information on this slide, but I'm going to kind of walk you through it a little bit here. So you see three different bands here, the construction costs in blue, the owner's soft costs in green and the total project costs in orange. The construction cost includes the trade packages, the construction manager staffing and fees. The owner's soft costs include the design fees and anything you put into the building. So that's going to be your furniture, it's going to be your telephone, servers, computer equipment, like is it anything that goes into that building itself is an owner's soft cost. And then the total project cost at the bottom adds those two together. So I wanted to kind of point out a couple instances here. So you see a jump from the two thousand and nineteen estimate in the blue section, the construction costs of sixteen million dollars and then design development, twenty-five point five million dollars. Obviously, two thousand and nineteen was before COVID. I know, I think we're all a little sick of hearing about that, but it is our reality that we are still, still dealing with today. Not all the cost is just from that, though. There were a couple items that were noted early in the design pro- There were a couple items that were noted early in the design process that needed to be included in this project. One of those is a new roof is needed at the building. We were hopeful to keep the old roof, but that's not feasible. And also, there's a requirement, well, we have to infill the raised flooring throughout the building. So most of that building is raised flooring right now, but that's not going to fit with the police department needs, so we're going to have to infill that with concrete. So those were two, you know, examples of, you know, unforeseen changes from that 2019 For the owner's soft costs, things remained relatively stable throughout. The current request does include the furniture budget that we were initially carrying. We went through room by room to make sure that every room has basically only what they truly need, as well as the quality that's provided. So my understanding for furniture is there's high-end, there's middle of the round, like middle of the road, and then there's a lower quality, something that you might find throughout Town Hall, WB Mason, that type of desk chair, what have you. So the initial estimate was everything middle of the ground, and through discussions with the administration, the police administration, a lot of the nine-to-five, eight-to-four offices are getting that lower quality, as we have great luck with that kind of quality in Town Hall itself, it's going to be used similarly. For the patrol functions, that's 24/7, we are going to keep that middle of the road, just because, you know, you do get what you pay for in some instances, and if things are going to be heavily used, we want to make sure that it's being taken care of. And then the other item that went up in the current request is the computers, telephone, and server equipment. I think a reasonable assumption to make in 2019 was that the police department would be taking a good chunk of their existing computers and whatever with them. We have asked the police department to do a look into that in the past few months, and it turns out that all of their, essentially all of their computer equipment, telephone equipment, is at end-of-life and has been needed for replacement for quite a few years now, and they're just hoping to get through to the next building where they will be able to start fresh. And then there are a couple exclusions in this current request. On the right, you can see it written on the bottom, that the current estimates exclude the cost of property acquisition, the radio communications and tower. I go into that a little bit on the next slide. So here you see the project cost exclusions at this point in time is the radio communications and associated tower. Right now, we're estimating between $1 and $1.5 million. You might be thinking that's quite a spread, and we agree, that's why we don't want to bring you guys a number for approval, we don't think that it's as fine-tuned as it can be. We have recently hired an independent consultant to help us get to a better number. So, and by better, I mean a more precise number, something that we feel good about coming back to and presenting at a future time, hopefully sooner rather than later. We're making great progress already, but it's just not quite there yet. And then just in kind of a full transparency, there's a few operational expenses that the chief's budget will end up having to include when he does move into this new building, and that's going to be renting the fiber connection from 135 North Main to 100 Barnes, and copier and printer rentals. So those aren't included in the soft costs or anything that you're approving tonight, it will be showing up in a future budget. Part of, you know, obviously what we have taken upon ourselves during design is keeping a control of the cost. And there's certain strategies that we went through to make sure that we were providing the police exactly what they need, and not, really not much more than that, because that was really the goal of the project, is to understand what the police need and how we could provide that for them. During design, the chief basically looked at this firearms training center, and the original layout of it included a 30-foot-by-30-foot room that would be used for virtual training. And there's been a change in technology where, and the chief has looked into that and done a lot of research, and he's able to take that, instead of it needing an entire room to itself, it's looking more like a virtual reality kind of headset-type training, and that could be relocated into the main building. So we were able to reduce the size of that building by about 900 square feet. Similarly, with the vehicle storage building, we were able to reduce it by one bay. There was one less vehicle that needed to be stored in this building. So we were able to reduce that, reduce the footprint by about 1,000 square feet. But something, you know, obviously, a reduction in building area is, you know, going to be beneficial, but really here, if you recall, these buildings are set into the hillside, so you're going to have a reduction in retaining wall as well. Then other cost-saving efforts, I explained a little bit about the furniture before, that effort reduced the cost by about 15%, and then the electrical switcher pre-purchase that you guys approved earlier or late last year. So with that, tonight, we are here to request an increase to that original $3.3 million bond appropriation by $31,548,000 for a new total bonding authorization of $34,848,000. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Carmody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening. Thank you for your presentation. I don't so much have questions, but I do have comments. I want to look forward, as I always want to look forward, and I think we should all be focused on the future, the future success of our town, our community, the future of Wallingford. We should have a vision for our future and a strategic plan on how to get there. And so I want to look forward regarding this proposal and this request that is before us this evening, because I do think it is a good strategic plan for us in the long term. But I do think that we need to pause for a moment to just digest some information. Mayor Dickinson felt it was necessary to hold a press conference with the police station steering committee last week to address some comments that were made regarding alleged PCBs in the building that we purchased at 100 Barnes Road. At this point, we all know the building has been inspected for asbestos and for lead, but not for PCBs, which is not a requirement. And it is mainly not a requirement because the use of PCBs in construction material was already limited and then federally banned in 1978, which is also the year the majority of the construction started on the building in question. Mr. Humes, our architect and consultant from Jankowski &amp; Humes out of Berlin, who is here this evening, and thank you for being here. Mr. Humes has a very positive reputation nationally for his over 30 years of experience in the design of municipal police and fire facilities. He is an expert in the design and construction of police departments. We are lucky to have him on board. Mr. Humes, however, advised the Wallingford Police Station Steering Committee on October 13th, 2020, at their October 13th, 2022 meeting, and reflected in their correct meeting minutes to make the draft report that references the PCBs to, quote, disappear. I would assume Mr. Humes would agree that he expressed his opinion on the matter of testing for PCBs in an unsuitable way, and that he unintentionally misspoke. What I have an issue with is that Mayor Dickinson intentionally held a press conference to deny that such statements referenced in the meeting minutes, or ever said in a draft report mentioning PCBs ever even existed. Mayor's press conference not only emphasized wrong information, but it also left a bad taste in the mouths of many because of its inaccuracy and because of its poor tone. I think this whole debacle has been stirred up mainly because of the erroneous information that was shared by our mayor at his press conference last week. And this has only jeopardized the necessity, in my mind, of this very important project, construction and renovation project for our police department. Mr. Mayor, I often disagree with the policy positions that you take or don't take, but I can always be assured, and I think the vast majority of people in our community would agree, that you can always be trusted, that your words are always truthful, and that your intentions and devotion to our town are noble. And while I think your intentions and devotion to our town remains unchanged, I am disappointed. And I have to question the trustworthiness of this administration after witnessing last week's press conference. You got it all wrong. So I think it's important that that point is mentioned. But again, I want to look forward and discuss what is before us tonight, making this additional appropriation for this project. You know, I wrote a letter to the editor the other day, and I mentioned how I've read the Record Journal every day since I was 11 years old, and someone actually said to me, that's a bunch of BS, you know, you didn't read the newspaper at 11 years old. But I actually did, and continue to do so. I was much older than 11, but I do remember this conversation about our police department outgrowing their building many, many years ago, maybe when I was around 20 years old. Because I think it was the 2007, in 2007, that Chief, the chief of police at the time, Douglas Tortenzio, issued his report, as you mentioned, about the need for a new police station, that we were on the verge at that time of outgrowing the current space. We probably would not be spending $35 or $36 million today if we had heeded Chief Tortenzio's advice nearly 15 years ago. But we are in this position that we are in. Our incredible police force has outgrown their facility, and they are long overdue for a building that meets the needs of the 21st century. This is an investment in the safety and well-being of our entire community. We need to continue to have an effective police force in our town, and this is an incredibly important tool for them to remain effective and have a positive impact for the town of Wallingford. I thank Chief Tortenzio, Chief Wright, Chief Ventura, for their many years of work on this project, a project that will hopefully come to fruition soon. Unless I hear something that persuades me otherwise, I am in full support of this motion or of this request, and certainly in full support of a new state-of-the-art police station. And that's all I have for now, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Counselor Fishbryne.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, in our last meeting, when I mentioned the, what was reflected correctly in the minutes about the recommendation that the report disappear, I sort of left it at that. My concern was, when I initially read it in the minutes, and it appears that I'm probably one of the only people that read it in the minutes, because most people in the know would have flagged that language. I had quickly hearkened to Fairfield. 2019, four officials from the town of Fairfield were arrested. They were arrested for, and it was the superintendent of the Department of Public Works, human resources officer, local environmental planner, and the interim director of public works. What were they arrested for? Illegal disposal of PCBs, conspiracy to commit illegal disposal of PCBs. I didn't mention that at the last meeting, I let it go, but I expressed a concern. Those cases remain pending. Those individuals have all been charged with three counts. They're all class C felonies, which require at least a year's prison time and up to three years. It's a serious matter. Now, the claim was made that, well, first of all, one must ask, if the report wasn't that bad, then why recommended it disappear? You must also ask, why no one who was at the meeting questioned that statement? Or is the statement so, statement of practice, so common, we've heard it all before, so many times, that, okay, it's just another one we're going to make disappear? That's part of the takeaway from listening to the recording, because there was no rebuke. Subsequent minutes don't address it at all. It sits in a vacuum. One could assume that that overture was acceptable and that the action was undertaken, and that's troubling. Now, the representation was made that, you know, you don't have to do the PCB testing because federal funds are not implicated. But the fact of the matter is, is that the mayor has proposed that federal funds be used for this project. The mayor has proposed $1.5 billion in ARPA funds to be used for this project. So the two don't work together, the puzzle pieces don't work together. For there to be a recommendation that this testing not be done, which, you know, on a legal basis, you have that analysis, on a, you know, environmental basis, you have that analysis, but because it's not necessary, and the reason why it's not necessary is because federal funds are not being used, when that is not an accurate representation, is troubling. Also, at the meeting, it was reflected that, and I believe the minutes also correctly reflect, that this substance, this thing, may take place in caulk, which caulk might, you know, the PCBs might leach into the masonry and it may cause a problem. Less than a month later, the project manual is issued for this project, November 2nd, no, November 3rd, I'm sorry. 512 pages. Page 55 talks about subcontractors and what they are supposed to do when they notice PCBs, suspend the project, notice in writing, that kind of stuff. At this point, all that's in the public domain is that PCBs may be in the caulk. Decision has been made not to do the testing. But I'll note on page 106 of the project manual, that it talks about paint at this site. I quote, once again, "Paints will be impacted by the renovation project, are presumed to contain PCBs." Now, when was that determination made? Because it's not part of the Environment Report. It's a question. But it's weeks after the Environment Report is apparently reviewed by the body. Page 107, it goes on and talks about what's supposed to happen if the paint is upset or stuff is moved having this paint on it. Page 175, once again, there's, the paints contain PCBs. 234, once again. 322, "The subcontractors shall expedite state and federal notifications and submittals associated with the abatement of PCB removal immediately upon receipt of a notice to proceed." And that has to do with the suspension and the restarting of the project. Page 415, it appears as part of the survey that Environment looked at the transformers and notated there was no PCBs, it's notated accordingly. Then I look at the Environment Report, that apparently the recommendation was made to make disappear, and it says, "Environment Services was retained by the town of Wallingford to perform a survey of suspect PCBs in the building materials prior to renovation." So I could only assume by that, that taxpayer dollars were So, I could only assume by that that taxpayer dollars were transferred to this entity in exchange for creating this document. And yet, we're talking about it disappearing. So, that's of additional concern. I also... The minutes. You know, I, I did watch the press conference. Unfortunately, it was sort of like under a shadow, because I didn't get an email about it. I, somebody texted me. I was in Hartford. I got on the system, and while it's going on, I think somebody asked a question about notice. There's nothing on the town website about it. There's nothing on the town calendar about it. But I watched. And you know, my initial takeaway was sort of like, well, it was disappointment to begin with. But it was almost like, some of us will remember, I'm old enough to remember, Richard Nixon, 1973, going on TV and saying, "I'm not a crook." It was air cover. And I'm sitting there, and I have the report, and I, and I know about the meeting. And that was disappointing, so. But looking at the minutes, which, at the press conference, it was claimed that they were wrong, and I think the reporter deserves an apology, because they are correct. They're almost verbatim what was said at that meeting. I noticed on the system where they are housed on the town website, this is the only set of meetings, or the only meeting, in the entirety of this body, in which it says "approved/corrected" minutes. You know, there's a lot of words here. I took some time to compare the draft, which is on the system, to the one that is represented as being approved or corrected. I don't see any difference between the two. And I will note that at the following meeting, on November 10th, the minutes are online, there's no motion to approve amended minutes. The motion was to approve the minutes, which, I don't know how we get to approve or correct a minute. So, you know, that's basically the word salad that I have for you tonight. I'm just, I'm disappointed where we are. I totally agree that we need a new police station. But I'm, I'm, I'm just really concerned about, you know, and for the past week, I've been thinking, can I vote on this without the veil of what is going on negatively impacting my decision? And I will thank Chief Wright. We had a nice conversation today. I appreciate that. And I'm just really disappointed where we are. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Moreau.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. You know, we've been talking about this police station since 2007. And clearly, the town needs a new police station. And I think the reason why, at the press conference, the statement was made that someone was trying to impugn the integrity of the...
Counselor Moreau, your mic's not on.
I'm new here, sorry. So, at the, at the press conference, the comment was made that someone was trying to impugn the integrity of the committee. So, the act that impugned the integrity of the committee was literally reading the committee's minutes. And that was the item that was so offensive that it required a press conference. I am rather embarrassed that we had to have a press conference. The facts were misstated. It's just, I don't understand how at this level of government, these kinds of things happen. We've needed a police station for a long time. I think the reason that these things are happening is because we're in a crisis. We've kicked this can down the road so many times that now we, we need a police station or bust. I mean, the, you know, the building's on fire. We're in an emergency now. So, there was a financial crisis in 2007 that led us to not build the police, the police station then, right? We're in a financial crisis now, and we're going to go ahead now. Why? Because we're in a crisis. What, what choice do we have? Right? So, I hate, as a councilperson, being put in the position where, you know, your choices say yes to the thing that's the, at the most expensive that it could have been in the, in the past 20 years. Or, you know, leave the police station in a situation where they're in a, in worse shape because they don't have the equipment that they require to do their job. I just don't know how it gets to this point where suddenly, you know, it's like the, we've had discussions about the parks. We've had discussion about the, the dog pound. Something's got to change. We can't just keep going down this road where we, we wait on everything. We kick the can down the road, and then we get to a point where we can't wait anymore, because now it's a crisis. So, I really appreciate the work the committee's done. I like the design. I have no concerns, you know, with any of the, the work, or the, you know, the, the comment. I think the comment was probably made in a way that wasn't intended to be sincere. I'm only guessing, but, you know, just sort of putting the best spin on it that I can. I think there's a lot of ways it could have been handled. You could have explained the comment. I don't think PCBs are a real concern based on the age of the building and so on. But I think that the way that the whole thing was handled now does create this sort of dark cloud over this, over this project, which I think should be a positive project, right? Because getting a new police station for the people of Wallingford, something we've needed desperately for 20 years, I think is, is an excellent, you know, an excellent direction to go in. So, I'm not going to vote against it, because I think that, again, the, what's the choice, right? So, the choice is you pay the inflated price because of the crisis we're in now, or you, you know, or you, you don't give the police what the tools that they need. So, I'm going to vote yes, but I'm going to vote yes, you know, and sort of, again, disappointed with how, how we got here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Laffin.
Thank you. You know, yeah, so disappointed, embarrassed. Press conference, not good. Minutes, not good. Audio recording, not good. I don't know. You know, it, it's hard when, when you watch it roll out that way with a lot of people on the committee, words being spoken, people you know on the committee, and nobody's saying anything. I, I agree with Counselor Moreau. It was probably not said, or not intended to be in a, in a very serious comment. It was just like, we don't need this. Get rid of it. But that's not how it came off, and that's not how it was recorded. And then it just kind of kept water falling, snowballing. And I'm sure that we'll talk about that for hours and hours on end over the next couple of weeks. On the governing side, Chief, thank you for, and I apologize for the necessity of the litany and having to spell out in tremendous detail the need for the police station. And I've talked to officers. I've heard from officers, you guys are busting at the seams. It's been a couple chiefs now and everything, as we talk about, and Wallingford takes forever. And I think it's with the best intention. It's just, it's, it's where we are. And, and the costs, I think they are what they are. Like, we always say, it is what it is, right? We had hoped it would be $24 million. It would be less. That was our guess. As you pointed out, the, the actual inflation and everything, it kind of works out. I think the greater point is, you know, do we wish it cost $10 million more? Of course we do, but this is what our community needs, and that's just the way it is. And if we want the police station that our community needs, this is what it's going to cost. And it is helpful to, to hear that those costs are relative. Because I think everybody up here has, has been challenged to be good stewards of the town's money. Chief, the PCB, you were quoted already. I've talked to officers. Are you concerned about the PCB levels based on what's already been circulating out there?
Based on what we were told and what we read, and, you know, some of the research some of our officers have done, the answer's no.
Yeah. And so I wanted you to be able to say that. I've heard the same from, from officers. I, I wish that had all flushed out better or differently. But that's where we are now. I, I support the project as I did before. It was also helpful hearing about the, the computer costs of, those are end of life, of course, and other things like that. So, it's helpful that we are at this point in this juncture, that we can start to include those type of costs in a cap, a large capital project like this. But, good luck, and I'm, I'm glad that we're making actual operational progress in getting this done.
I just want to ask, Mr. Senna, does the bond contemplate the use of ARPA funds? Or does the bond cover the project without the use of ARPA funds?
It does not include ARPA funds.
Thank you. Counselor Tada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have some questions that came up during the presentation, so if you don't mind, I'll just ask a few. The current building, I believe, was said to be about 24,000 square feet, and 47,000 is what was needed in the assessments. What is the new building, the square footage of the new building?
The, the main building is, I believe, yeah.
Brian, do you have those numbers?
45,000 for the main building, and then additional for the firearm training center and the vehicle storage area.
Okay. And do we know what, does anyone know what the square footage of those new buildings will be? I know you've reduced them a little bit.
Not off the top of my head, but if one bay was 1,000, so probably about, this is approximate. 5,000 square feet for the vehicle, storage building, probably another 1,500 for the firearm training center.
Okay, thank you.
And I will cut back to you if I'm correct on that.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And then the, I know at our, at our current location, we added that, I think you use it for storage, the building behind. When, when was that added, and how large is that building, do you know?
So, it's smaller than, I believe, is it smaller, the same size as what we're...
It's a little bit smaller.
It's a little bit smaller, and it was done before I was, I think it was done in maybe 2018. It was before I started. Do you know that?
And you're saying it's a little bit smaller than the 5,000 square foot vehicle building that we're going to be adding to the new location? Okay, all right. Oh, you talked about the flooring, that it's, it's like a subfloor now, and it has to be concrete white. What's the reason for that?
So, I think 3M, when they occupied the building, had, you got to think, you know, older, right? So, in the 80s, 90s, they ran all their IT underneath the floorboards. But a majority of the section of the building is basically open. So, when you're walking up there right now, you can, you know, because of the age, you can fall through the floor. And there's a lot of areas that we don't need that raised flooring, so they're going to fill that in. And then where we do need, instead of going underneath the floor, they're going to go basically over and then down through the ceiling, which makes it easier to kind of, you know, for the IT person to address any issues that we might have.
Okay, all right, thank you. Oh, and another thing, this was on one of the slides, the fiber connection from 135 North Main to 100 Barnes, is that because the communications...
So, I can answer that. The, so what you need to think of right now is that you have basically two different living creatures, right? So, you have 135 North Main, you just can't shut it off, right? So, everything that goes into 135 North Main is communications, not for just police, but for fire. All the servers that are running to the computers in the cars, basically the entire operation can't be turned down. So, what our IT director will do is that he will run a fiber line from 135 to 100 Barnes and be able to transfer all the information that he needs in this, you know, the memory to new servers on the new property. So, he can turn that building on, and it can be functioning without anyone being in there. So, the goal is, you can't move in until that building is operational. And the only that we can make it operational is on a fiber run, because, and to do a fiber run, we would have to, you know, figure out what kind of infrastructure that we need to get it there. It's not cheap, but it's something that's a necessity. We can't do without it.
So, it's, it's expensive, but it's really only, it's really only temporary, correct?
So, the fiber run would be temporary, yes. We need fiber, like, we're in the age now that we need fiber. We've had our IT director look at fiber options right now, just for us, since there is no infrastructure in town, is to lease it. The speeds that we would need initially to get it up and running would be approximately $4,000 a month. But we can turn down that speed once we start going, and that's something that, you know, the police department would have to budget for on our own.
So, this line that we'll need to put in, I mean, if we, if we were to, let's say, sell the property where the existing building is, it doesn't matter. I mean, the line's there because you need it temporarily to get up and running, but once you don't need it, it just...
Correct. And then, as a backstory, depending on what happens with Doolittle Park as far as the camera system goes, that fiber run might be needed to transfer the images from the cameras at Doolittle to Barnes in the future.
Thank you. So, we're just looking through my notes here. Oh, in regards to the mechanicals, I know, obviously, it looks like you have antiquated mechanicals, and that's going to be a big cost. But I just want to bring up, if we do, I know there was some talk about, you know, possibly reusing the, the old armory building in the future for something else. I know Board of Ed offices was thrown out there. Those mechanicals will end up being a huge cost to us, no matter what, because if we put something else in there, we're obviously going to be addressing that. So, I just want to make sure, you know, I just want to point that out, that those mechanicals in that building, if we do keep the building for whatever purpose, well, we're definitely going to need to address that. And it looks like that will be a large cost for us in the future. In regards to the PCBs, I just wanted to, I know Counselor Laffin just asked. But I'm, I'm still a little bit leery about, I'm not 100% convinced that we don't need to test for them. I'm, I'm just not clear on what happened. I read all the minutes. I, I listened to everything. I know I was involved with a, a project recently where there was an environmental cleanup. The PCBs had to be removed. They were removed. And even after they're removed, there's still a deed restriction for certain things, like, I believe, a school, for example, or a daycare, or certain things like that can't go on that property ever, because there were PCBs there at one point. So, is there, are we looking into doing any sort of testing for them, or is that completely off the table at this point?
So, we've been told by Environment Ed twice now in writing that PCB is not required for testing for this building. And we also have heard that from an independent environmental tester as well. So, you know, as much as they're three-page, so if, if you notice, there's, the title of that is, you know, PCB survey, which is different than, than a report. I know it's probably semantics to a lot of people. But, you know, we were looking at the same time as it'll lead an asbestos report. And those reports have, you know, project overview, they have a sample location plan. So, there's a floor plan, and it shows exactly where samples came from. It shows the laboratory reports, when these samples get sent out, analyzed, sent back with results. And then, obviously, the results as well in a summary. So, none of that was, was done for PCBs. There was never a test taken. We did, in our original quote, when we were looking for, you know, environmental testing services, kind of what I, I believe our intention was, was let's try to get everything on one quote that we think we might possibly need, and then let the expert that we're about to hire with this quote tell us what we actually need. So, that did include a line item for PCBs, also included a line item for asbestos testing, lead testing, and an hourly rate for testing as well. So, the PCBs were never tested. They were never paid for or anything like that. The asbestos and lead, there were tests taken, and, and we did receive results, and it was very helpful to compile everything. For the, you know, the, the three-page survey that, that we got from Environment Ed, I did inquire, because I, to be honest, I didn't really understand why we received it in the first place. We didn't ask for it. You know, I knew they didn't do the work for it. And when I asked them, I said, "Oh, we sent it as a placeholder," and that, so really, we probably never even should have received it in the first place. I know I'm not trying to, at all, to make any excuses here. You know, but the fact of the matter is, when, you know, a couple people have alluded to it, it, when, when I heard those words during, during the meeting, no part of me thought, "He means to act like it never existed." Of course it exists. Anything that comes to my email, good, bad, or ugly, exists. Anybody can ask for that, and I print it off immediately. That is, that's how I operate. That's how I operated with this. I didn't even read it first. Somebody asked for it, like, that doesn't really sound familiar, because it was a blip in time during this entire project. And I went and I took a look, and I was like, "Oh, this does exist, so let's print it out and give it..." And then I read it later. So, it was, you know, it was absolutely not received in any sort of nefarious way. And I am well-trained... And I am well-trained on, you know, information requests and everything like that. So this is no different and, you know, absolutely as Chair, I should have been more sensitive to the wording that was being used. This is really the only public committee I'm, I'm a part of and I do happen to chair it. And I'm learning every day and unfortunately had to learn this one in the, in the public light, but.
Yeah, I appreciate that. So I guess my question, I guess, is still raised, if, just because this, this is how it played out and it might maybe put the public at ease to do the testing, what would be an approximate cost if we said, okay, because this is how everything went down, maybe we just do it to put everybody's minds at ease? Do we know what a cost for that would be?
So unfortunately, I do not have a cost, the, the quote, I believe it came out to $70 per test. But really, and to be honest, and I, I do not mean to, you know, put off your question at all, but cost was never really discussed because that's not what, yes, cost is very important, but when it comes to meeting requirements, it is what it is. And that's kind of a phrase I use a lot, and if that's the price of it, that's the price of it. When we were, you know, discussing whether or not, you know, what tests to do, OSHA requires asbestos and lead for the workers. And so we did that. Another thing about just putting the public's mind at ease, I just yesterday pulled building permits for 100 Barnes Road. Just curious what kind of work may have, you know, been done in the past. In 1990, all windows were replaced, so I guess I can't say all, but it says, you know, exterior window replacement. So whether or not it was every single one, I, I'm not positive, but right there, the caulking's gone. So, you know, it's, it's, you know, we'll never be able to definitively say one way or another that PCBs exist or they don't exist. But there is, you know, we have gotten the expert opinion that there is no cause for concern or reason for testing PCBs at this, at this project. And I think that's just, you know, personally, as just somebody invested in this project, I, I liked seeing that the windows were replaced in 1990.
Yeah, and I, I agree and I, you know, normally the, I would, I would respect the professionals' opinions and, and not do the testing if they say it's not recommended. In this case, I think I might just ask the committee to maybe think about just having the testing done soon. Just think, think about that, maybe consider it. Like I said, if it's, you know, relatively inexpensive and at least it puts everybody's minds at ease, I think it just might be, might be worth it at this point. So I'd just ask, maybe the committee can maybe discuss that or think about that. You know, it's, it's just, it's hard when you, when you're asking, you know, the public to spend $35 million and now there's this kind of, you know, error of, it's just, it's, I think Counselor Carmody said it kind of left a bad taste in, in everyone's mouth. And so I'm just trying to alleviate that, that fear, you know, the fear of the unknown. So maybe if, if the committee would just maybe consider that or discuss it, I'd appreciate that. So my next, well, I, I guess while I'm on that topic, you know, in regards to the, the press conference, I just, I had one thing I wanted to bring up. So I was in Newington when I got word of the, the press conference. I didn't, I didn't receive any notice or email or anything before it happened. So I kind of heard through the grapevine and it would have been in about 45 minutes and I was tied up in Newington. I, I couldn't get back to town to make it, but I would have liked to have known about it so I could attend. But I guess the, the questions I, I would have asked, I could maybe just ask tonight. I was just curious, did the committee meet prior to the, the press conference to discuss these issues? Or discuss like what would happen at the press conference?
No, we had a regular meeting on Thursday, but it wasn't discussed.
Okay, so everyone was just asked to please?
Yeah, if, if people were available, then.
At the conference, okay. And, and the, the only other thing I want to say about the, the press conference, and then I'll, I'll move on to my questions about the financial aspect of this. But several times in the meeting, it was said that the integrity of the steering committee was impugned because of the questioning of the minutes. And it was also stated that the minutes were inaccurate. However, after comparing the audio and the minutes, the minutes were, they were almost a direct quote. And I, I feel that Mrs. Cheryl Ann Tubby, the recording secretary, deserves a public apology for her competency being impugned by those statements. In my experience with various boards and commissions, I've known Mrs. Tubby to be outstanding at her job. When I saw her name on the minutes, I knew, I, I was sure that they were accurate because she always does a very good job. To, so to see her job be publicly brought into question and wrongfully so, as it turns out, that affects her career. And I would please ask, is anyone, you know, willing to offer her a public apology? So we have that on the record tonight for impugning her reputation in regard to her job.
If you're directing that at me, you should do so by saying, will the mayor correct something? But let me say this, I indicated that the minutes are a summary, they always have been. I don't believe I ever said they were incorrect, I said they're a summary. To take minutes and from that, from that deduce that people are intentionally doing an unlawful act, I find highly irresponsible. If you're going to accuse people of a very serious act of hiding or destroying public records, then you need to look at more than minutes in your collection of evidence. That to me is impugning the character and intentions of people who are serving the community.
Well, Mr.?
So is the mayor, mayor stating that the minutes are correct or incorrect?
I haven't read the minutes, I didn't characterize the minutes as incorrect or correct. I said they're a summary. From that summary, and maybe it was a quote, I, I haven't read them. But from that, it was deduced that people were intentionally destroying or removing something of a serious content. That is what my concern is, that if there is a belief or a deduction of that kind, more evidence has to be collected than to read minutes of a meeting.
Mr. Chairman, do I, do I still have the floor?
You still have the floor.
No problem, thank you. Mr. Mayor, I didn't mean to be indirect, I was just, I was just trying to be polite. But I, I guess if you want me to ask you directly, I guess I would just ask, you know, would, I think a public apology is in order for Mrs. Tubby because I'm not, I'm not addressing what you were saying about what was said. But you, you did state that she, that the minutes were wrong and that she didn't do her job properly. And that's, I take that very seriously because that's her career and I think she always does a stellar job from my experience. And I don't want that on the record for her, that she did not do a good job. And then that this is why this happened and that this is why we had to have a press conference because her, she did her job inaccurately because it was proven that that wasn't the case.
First of all, that was not why the press conference was held. The press, press conference was held because of comments I read in the newspaper, guessing that people intentionally do that, did that because it showed up in the minutes. That is wrong. The minutes themselves can't be a basis for accusing people of committing a pretty, pretty, pretty serious crime. I don't believe that I ever said that the minutes were wrong, I said the minutes are a summary. If I did say, or someone interpreting that I said the minutes were wrong, then certainly I apologize for that. I don't believe I said that. But again, the issue is to characterize the people serving on the committee as intentionally destroying records of import is a very serious accusation.
Okay, I, I'll, I'll move on, I think. But again, I would, I would ask, you know, I, I think, I don't know if it should come, who it should come from, but I, I would please ask if the committee or the mayor or anyone would be willing to issue her a written apology so that she can keep that in her professional file, so that she has a document to counter what was publicly said about her minute-taking accuracy. I just think that would be a nice thing for her to have, because I would hate for, you know, somebody to, to look at that and then, you know, judge her, her job based on that, because that is on the record. My, my budget questions for the comptroller. I did, I, we did speak earlier today and I'd emailed these questions ahead of time, so Mr. Senna said he would have these answers for us. But the first question I asked was if you'd be able to provide the total cost at the current bonding rates of a $34 million purchase bonded over 30 years? Or in other words, basically, how much does the interest add to this project?
Okay, so I, I did it using 33 million.
That's fine, thank you.
Because we have already bonded the part of the 3.3 that was originally, so. Using round numbers, I would only need about $33 million if this gets approved tonight. So if we were going to issue $33 million bonds for 30 years at 3.5%, the interest would be $17,902,500, so rounding about $51 million. But just to be, we, I would not recommend that we would do 30 years. We'd most likely do 20 years, and I have those numbers for you.
Okay, please.
So now doing $33 million of bonds for 20 years at 3.5% interest, which when I talked to our advisor today, said that was a reasonable number to use. The interest would be $12,127,500 for a total cost of $45,127,500.
Thank you. And then the second question was to please provide an estimate of how much a 34 million, well, 33, I guess, million dollar expense bonded over 30 years would cost the median taxpayer at our current mill rate and our, and at the current estimated bond rate?
All right, so this is the answer for if we did $30 million? For, I mean, if we did 30 years?
If you, whichever you have, if you have 20 is fine.
I have both.
Yeah, you can give me both then, that'd be good.
All right, so if we were going to do the 30 years, the only way I could do this was to do an average. So I would have to, so I took the 51 million, divided it by 30, and I get average cost of 1.6 million. Actually, 1.7 if we're rounding. So that would, you would have to, at the current, if we're going to put that in the current budget, we would have to raise the mill rate by 0.38. So that would affect the median residential house. The taxes for this year would increase $69 from 52.56 to 53.25.
Thank you. And then, you know, obviously over time, as the mill rate goes up, that, you know, that, that raises. But I just want to make sure we all, you know, understood the, the tax implications. Because this is clearly a, you know, massive expense. And I know often over the last few years, the council has spent a lot of time talking about saving residents and businesses money post-COVID and because of inflation. And we eliminated other less expensive projects because of cost concerns. And now we're putting this, this financial burden on our residents and taxpayers. So I would, I would just ask the council, if this does pass tonight, you know, just please ask my fellow counselors and, and the mayor to keep in mind that we're increasing our, our annual budget, you know, for, for 20 years for all, you know, on all of our businesses and our residents. And we should be trying to cut that same amount elsewhere in order to keep the town affordable. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had forgotten to mention before, you know, Counselor Carmody had talked about the Record Journal and Record Journal's getting a lot of, a lot of press tonight. I don't know how old I was in second grade, I was around 11, 11 years old. And I remember writing a poem, it was, yeah, it was a poem, like a haiku about pollution. And I published it in the paper. I remember when my, my grandparents here in town passed away and we were cleaning out the house, they, they had that up on the wall. So I've been reading the newspaper a very long time, so. You know, we just heard about, you know, statements that were made in the newspaper that were so offensive. And, and I looked back at the statement, I, I, I mean, I guess that's, that was pointed at me. But, you know, I, I, what was in the newspaper was, you know, I brought to the attention of this body that the statement was in the minutes. And it says, we're going to put police officers in the building and the minutes reflect that there is some reporting that came back and the recommendation has been made not to do any further testing. I guess because additional PCBs may arise. And the minutes reflect a recommendation the architect's suggesting making the draft report repair, disappear. That's troubling, and we told the police union, that's troubling. That was the first statement. The, the next one was, it's troubling to learn that a consultant for the town would ever suggest making a, a report disappear. Even more troubling is that there's no indication, the minutes, of rejection of this proposition by any member of the committee and therefore the natural assumption is that there was general agreement to do so. From my perspective, the only reason government would exercise itself of this ordinarily public information would be to avail itself of liability should an employee of the town here, police officers and staff, be diagnosed with cancer and make a claim that it was caused by a known condition. Government would respond with, you have no proof, because government had made the, the proof disappear. I for one do not support such clandestine activities neither in public or in private. I, I, I stand behind those statements. The minutes were accurate. I don't know why anyone would recommend that a report would disappear. Clearly, that was what was said, and I believe it was said twice at that meeting, in that, that short span of time. And I don't know why, as I said earlier, if the report was so innocuous, you just leave it in the file. It was a draft, it was discussion by the body whether or not to go forward with something. I can understand the decision not to go forward based upon the collateral statements that have been made. You know, lack of, lack of requirement, lack of federal funding, that kind of stuff? Just leave it in the file. I, I didn't intend to impugn anyone's integrity, the minutes are the minutes. The other portion of disappointment was the press conference and people sitting on the stage who were at the meeting and I would hope had heard the statement disappear. And when it was alleged at the press conference that this really didn't happen, and it was stated the minutes are wrong. It was said. I've watched that press conference three times now. Minutes are wrong and mistakes happen, that's what was said. I gotta tell you, about 15 minutes ago, I was going to recuse myself from this vote, because I just, we should not be having this discussion. Statement should not have been made, should have been rejected, there should have been some indication that, you know, for all I knew, the report did disappear, because there was no response. As I said before, it's disappointing that we're here, but, you know, to, we are where we are, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Testa.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Did you hear me all right?
Yes.
I, I wanted to respond to one, one thing that Counselor Tada said, speaking about the long-term effects of, you know, the bonding. And with, we have a annualized cost in our budget, that doesn't go up if the mill rate goes up. It's a dollar about, so I would want to leave that confusion that, you know, it might be $1.2 million. So I would want to leave that confusion that, you know, it might be 1.2 million dollars in one year, but if the mill rate goes up, it might become 1.8. It would, the mill rate is set after the budget is set. So that, that would be, that's a misconception I wouldn't want anyone to have. Secondly, I'm not going to repeat what others have said. I, you know, I think that press conference was, you know, was unfortunate putting it bonding. I have a background in PCB management disposal profession. We go back many years. I actually worked for Westinghouse when we removed most, not all of the transformers from Wallingford Electric. Back when they all had to be changed out. We got rid of all the ballast. So you talk about where PCBs are gonna be in a building. They're typically in oils. Transformers and, well, that's a light ballast. Yes, they were used in some caulkings and some other materials because they were a plasticizer. But I think it was pointed out, and I didn't know this, the fact that there was a window replacement project done in the 90s reduces even more the possibility that there might be any trace of PCBs anywhere in this building. And frankly, based on just what my experience has been over time in the past, you know, we should take those, you know, dispose of this stuff. And it's expensive. And if it was, again, it was usually oil that was incinerated. But if it's debris, it depends on what type of debris. It depends on how you handle it. I, I honestly would find it hard to believe you would find anything in this building that would pose a hazard. About saying I can guarantee you that there's no trace of PCBs that are in this building. But based on what the environmental consultant has said, based on the history of PCBs in general, regulations, so on, history of the building, I think you would, it's very safe to say that it's not an issue that could potentially impact the health and welfare of our police officers, which is the primary concern here. And we have two people, one past, one current police chief whose job and careers were established with the understanding that their prime responsibility is the safety and welfare of the officers that report to them. And I, I, you know, I, I have to feel that if they had any thoughts that there might be some danger, you know, they would suggest, "Hey, we better test for these things." Where you test, who knows? And secondly, thirdly, wherever I am, we, we should not let this discussion derail the approval of this project if enough people feel strongly that, you know, we still should do some testing. Well, go ahead, order it. Make a motion, add to the project cost for some PCB testing. With the understanding that if you scrape some caulkings out of a window in the basement or you, you find a brick or a tile or something that, for whatever reason, has some paint that has some trace PCBs, it either has to be removed or encapsulated. It's gonna add a little bit to the construction cost. It's gonna add a little bit to the overall project. But I think, while I share the frustration with my fellow counselors with how this was handled, I'm trying to look at the big picture. The big picture is that this project is long overdue and I think we need to go forward and get it done. And there are, you know, there's gonna be some, there are gonna be some changes potentially. If you want to test for PCBs, go ahead. But don't use that as a, a reason to vote down the bond ordinance. This is a big project, we need to get rolling. And we gotta keep in mind, this is one project. We got a gigantic school project coming. I'm not letting the pool die. There, there are things we're gonna be needing to do. And I'm unhappy to see that the cost of this has increased the way it has. But it's totally gonna get worse. So we can plan, that's why I advocate bonding in the first place when I talk about capital projects. We can budget for it. And we can budget creatively and, and we can look to all sorts of federal and state infrastructure grants and money that may be available that we're not looking for now. So there's a lot of ways to handle it, but I, I just, I just wanna make those viewpoints. I'd like to see this go forward. And if I had any, any thought in my mind if there was a risk to the safety of our police officers from PCBs in that building, I'd be the first one putting up yellow tape or on the building. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I apologize for being on the phone tonight. I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further hands on the council, I will commence the public hearing. I hereby convene the public hearing for the amendment of the $3,300,000 ordinance for the purchase of 100 Barnes Road for a new police headquarters adopted April 13, 2021, to increase the appropriation and bond authorization by an additional $31,548,000 for the construction and renovations of a new police headquarters. The ordinance, which is the subject of this public hearing, is available to the public and may be obtained at this meeting or from the town clerk. Is there a motion and a second to read the title of the proposed ordinance and waive the reading of the remainder of the ordinance, incorporating its full text into the minutes of this meeting?
So moved.
By Laffin? Seconded by Allenson?
Yes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes and I will read the title of the ordinance. An ordinance, amending an ordinance appropriating $3.3 million for the purchase of 100 Barnes Road for a new police headquarters and authorizing the issue of $3.3 million of bonds of the town to meet said appropriation and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose to increase the scope of the project and increase the appropriation and bond authorization therein by an additional $31,548,000. Are there any comments from the public? Start on that side of the room, you're next. Name and address for the record, please.
Andrew Whitehouse, 56 Bayberry Drive. I formerly am employed by Dukensky-Humes. I no longer work for them, but during this project, I was with Mr. Humes while we did all the space needs assessments, did all the design work, met with all the departments of the police department. I toured the facility, existing facility. I surveyed the new facility. I met with the steering committee several times. I met with Downs Construction to go through the detailed budgets. And I just want everyone listening at home and all of you to know that they have done exceptional work. They have really, as the chief showed, they have gone through detailed. I am very comfortable as a taxpayer to recommend you all pass this unanimously. We desperately need it. As he showed, just the cells alone with bars, it's a very big litigation risk for the town. I personally worked with Mr. Humes to replace the cell fronts in Berlin that he talked about and I, it's very bad. We really need this project, thank you.
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. First question that's brought up tonight, how much is the roof and the flooring?
We're coming up with that answer.
I understand, I see him.
Jeff Anderson with Downs Construction. Roofing system is $1,337,049. Flooring system?
You need to get closer to the microphone, I'm sorry.
Sorry about that. The roofing system is $1,337,049. Excuse me, the writing's small. And the flooring system is three, I'm sorry, $647,730.
And that's just to replace all the floors in the building or just to put the concrete in the areas where the floor raises?
The actual concrete would be a separate number, so it's a portion of another line item. It's a portion of $1,370,000. They don't have the breakout of what that infill would be.
So that's included with the roof, is what you're saying? You said it's part of 1.3 million.
No, the concrete, which is what we're infilling where the raised flooring used to be. The total concrete price is $1,370,000. A portion of that is the infill of that raised floor.
You don't know if it's like 20% or 30% or?
I don't have that information.
Are you replacing all the windows in the building?
Yes.
All right, so that, that gets rid of the PCBs to begin with, but just curious about that. So that's already in the cost of replacing everything?
Correct.
Is it a flat roof then that's this cost?
I believe we're pitching the roof drains, Brian.
Flat roof.
Flat roof.
Through the, I guess to the chair or to the, somebody, I don't know who. There was mention of ARPA funds. Can you use ARPA funds for this project if you don't test for PCBs?
I think we'd, we'd have to look into that, but we, the request tonight is for all the construction costs. So we'd have to look into that further.
No, I understand that, but I'm just asking about, because it was brought up about using ARPA money, potential using ARPA money for the project. So can you use ARPA money if you don't test for PCBs? Because then it's a federal grant and federal has to be tested for renovations, that's all I'm asking.
Yeah, there are some expenses that we still have to put out for, outside of the trade packages that were bid on. So sorry, it's weird that I have to talk back to you.
No, you don't have to turn around, you don't have to turn around.
But yeah, so basically, you know, we do still have this, this tower radio communication system that is forthcoming and, you know, there's furniture that has to be bought that is part of this bond appropriation, but.
Is or is not?
The furniture is, the radio communications and the tower is not.
But the tower could stay at 135 North Main?
The 135 North Main Tower is staying and please correct me if I'm wrong. It provides radio coverage for the downtown area, so even, you know, you still need the tower there.
Well, can the police, the new police station use that as their communications tower?
So we have a microwave system, which means that all the towers need to look at each other and need to be able to talk to each other. So there's multiple towers, both in Wallingford and there's others in North Branford. So what we thought originally in a conversation we had with our radio communications companies that we might not need a tower on, at 100 Barnes, that we might just need an antenna. Since then, it, it looks like a consensus is we're probably gonna need a tower. The tower needs to talk to each other, so. No matter what happens with 135 North Main Street, we're still going to need a way to get the radio communications to 100 Barnes because it's a, it's a microwave system. If you go up without any sort of microwave or connection at 100 Barnes and you lose connectivity for the entire town.
So essentially, you need 135 to stay?
Correct.
Even if you sold the building?
Correct.
How much is in the budget for contingency?
Owner contingency is $1.5 million.
Have you, have you ever looked at the cost of a new building, building it new?
No, our charge as a committee was to prepare 100 Barnes Road for a police department as a renovation.
So the next question would be probably the same answer. Do you have any idea what it would cost to tear down the building?
We do not.
But being of, I assume it's a 45,000 square foot building?
Correct, maybe just shy, we have two additions going in to make it 45, so.
To get, make it to 45? So the builder here might be able to give us. I, I'm just surprised, as I was originally back in 2021, that this wasn't a teardown to begin with and that you're trying to, as the town has done with parking racks and with the police station where it is now and et cetera, buying a building and then trying to fit it, fit what you need into that building. And I was just, I'm just surprised even at this late juncture, would it be feasible to try and get up with some quick numbers to see what the difference is between the two? Because you have a building that's 45 years old here. Are you changing all the cooling, HVAC, everything being replaced? Or are you staying with what you have?
Yeah, it's all being replaced.
So, and the walls are concrete in this building? The building that you have now, they're concrete?
The building, it's a lot of sheet rock.
Okay, so it'll be easier to get the wiring? Because you're gonna have to run on the wiring and stuff into this building?
Correct.
So it'll be tearing, so you're literally gonna take it down to the studs, the whole building?
Yeah, that's correct. And, you know, something that I, I find interesting is that, you know, we, we bought this building and then we did a space needs assessment. And the space needs assessment is what tells you how big of a building you need. So there was never, you know, discussion of, oh no, you know, chief, that's not a real need because we can't fit it. You know, that was, his entire need for the entire department is satisfied with the proposed construction 100 Barnes, including the additions and the outbuildings.
I'm not saying that, but I'm saying if you want a 100-year, 50-year building, you're starting with a 45-year-old building here and you're retrofitting it to fit what you need in there versus taking a piece, you have a canvas there, a blank canvas, if you were to tear it down, of nine acres, I think it is. And then you can start and build what you want, place the way you want it and have for future, you, you can set up the buildings the way you want to be able to add on in the future as the town grows, hopefully. And I'm just surprised that the town never did anything like that, but that's not surprising. There was mention of 2007, 2008, and it was in the financial crisis. And this just goes to the mayor's lack of planning. Because when Humes did the first assessment, it was November of 2009 when the town received it. So the financial crisis was here, but it was waning at this point. The economy was starting to move again. I don't know for what reason the mayor didn't want to go ahead with it, but that's just the lack of planning. And then I guess as some of the counselors have said tonight, are, you know, you're wall, you know, you're against the wall, you really need to get the police department done. And everybody understands that, that this needs to get done, it's needed to get done for 20 years. Well, since 15, when D'Ortensio did the, yeah, 2007, D'Ortensio did the first report. And 2009, Humes did the assessment of it. And here we are in 2023, still haven't built the building yet for the police department. So it's understandable why they're woefully under needed. But again, it's the town's lack of planning.
Can I just find out how many other people want to speak? Because we're well into our time. Good evening, your name and address for the record, please.
Pardon me. Kathleen Hunter, North Orchard Street. And my first question is to engineer, I'm sorry, I don't know how to pronounce your last name, Kapachinsky. Can you please confirm that the PCB study was not in the scope of what was requested from Environment to begin with?
So it was included on the quote request, however, that was just to hire this expert, you know, environmental testing agency. So then, once they were hired, it was discussed and they were never asked to perform tests and that was based on their recommendation not to perform testing.
Okay, thank you. Also, this is a construction-related question. Are there any mitigation strategies in the absence of testing that you would use as a standard practice, such as removal of six inches past the border of the windows, for example, if you do not perform testing, which is not required just as a mitigation strategy? Is that, is any of that happening or is that just not in scope at this time?
No, it's, it's out of scope, but, you know, we are removing all the windows and, you know, tearing down to the studs.
Okay. All right. Now, my, I will also say I'm a licensed professional engineer. I've been on committees like this and interdisciplinary large project teams and I've participated in meetings similar to what this committee does. And frankly, I've been disappointed by how the town in general has addressed the issue of an out-of-scope, unsolicited, three-page draft that basically had no content. And from requesting language clarifications from a meeting three months ago, leading the entire thing, how it's been handled. And from requesting language clarifications from a meeting three months ago, the entire thing, how it's been handled. The three-page draft was probably, maybe took an hour, I'd guess, or two for Environment to resemble. There's nothing in it. It's entirely marked draft. It's basically junk mail. So I don't think it belongs in the project record. I do agree with Counselor Fishbein that the word disappear was incorrect and it should be stricken from the meeting minutes. But it disappoints me that right now, this unsolicited document has burned through hours of time, speculation and goodwill at various levels of the community, both interpersonally on social media as well as within this body. Um, one thing I would say is that I don't understand how it ended up in the paper to begin with, but it is their purview to do so. But they really should be doing their due diligence by reaching out to Environment or the committee to find out what the context is, rather than just putting in a bunch of information about PCBs that ended up scaring everyone. I also think that the um, press conference was a little too, had a little too short of a lead time because the committee members should have had the opportunity to review the recording prior to the, prior to the event, so that they can answer good faith questions from the town. I will say that all of these comments do not hold back in any way. My belief that I do think we need a new police station. It seems we've definitely more than outgrown the existing one. But I do think it was unfair to expect committee members to remember exact wording of a meeting that occurred three months prior to the press conference without an opportunity to review what was stated. I don't remember words that I said three months ago. I really don't. It's January and the quote unquote draft should have, it was resolved three months ago. It was probably in the mind of the committee. Also, engineers and architects work really hard to make sure that the code requirements are met on projects. Both professional engineers and licensed architects are are bound by codes of ethics. So we are doing our best. People make mistakes and I do agree with that Mr. Hume misspoke. But this has turned into a much larger issue and I feel like we haven't learned anything from that. What are we going to do in the future? Do we need to review our meeting minutes more expediently? Do we need a counselor with a legal background to look for words that shouldn't be present in that meeting minutes to make sure that it doesn't carry forward three months and create an enormous amount of noise? Does the recording secretary need paralegal training in order to resolve this? What are we going to do so this doesn't happen again in the future and create as much noise as this has occurred? Thank you very much.
Bruce Conroy, Burke Heights Drive. Um, I don't know. So if there might be PCBs there, I am, I am, I'm gonna say that I'm glad happy that the police don't care, but we have to build it. So if there is a doubt that there is something there, just test. And we have, if we have to remediate, we remediate it. When the building's done, you're perfectly safe. It's true. And let me tell you, I am, I am definitely not against a new building. Because you've needed it for what, sixteen years? It's been kicked down the road probably before that when you got stuck in that building. So just do the test. What's the big deal? You might find some and they have to be removed. So the health and safety of the workers, the hun- hundred or so that are going to be there, what's the big deal? And honestly, Downs is a great company. I've worked for them. They're going to do a great job. They're very responsible. So you're doing everything right and it's a nice building and as it's it's going to be renovated to new. So new, old, renovated to new is pretty much new. We we know that. And I want to thank Counselor Fishbein, Marone, Tada and Carmody for standing up for everything. Don't let anybody bully you. If he said something wrong, he should apologize. And it's in writing, I mean, maybe he didn't, maybe he forgot what he said. I don't know, whatever. Sorry, Mayor, sometimes that happens. I do it. It, but but what was said was unacceptable. You don't, you don't say it in a meeting to make things disappear. Oh, I didn't mean it. It doesn't usually work for me when I say the wrong thing. Oh, I didn't mean it afterwards, whatever, doesn't matter. You said it, you all can decide what to do about that. But the simple fact is, if there is something there that might harm the workers that are building it, just do the test, please. That's all. I have to go to New York City and do a building that definitely has them. Good night.
Bill Comer from Broadview Drive. Um, going back to the record journal one final time. January tenth, which was two weeks ago, there's a quote in it from the mayor. It says, I hesitate to vote on it until we have hard amounts. Right now, I have no confidence in the amount quoted from the vendor. It was two weeks ago. I don't know what changed from January tenth and now. Um, you didn't have confidence back then, but all of a sudden now we're filling the room up with confidence.
Pretty sure he was talking about the radio tower, which is what we're not voting on tonight.
Um, I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, but if you read the article, I beg to differ. I think it was, it was the whole cost of the entire project because the headline may have stated something about the project going up to thirty-five million dollars. You can check, you guys have internet, I believe. Chief, we talked about the the antenna. Um, I'm not familiar with antennas. I did listen to that whole tape and some of the discussion was based upon the antenna. And from listening to that, didn't seem like in that room really was a lot of people that had any knowledge of antennas or microwaves or Nor Cam systems and so forth. Is that fair for me to say?
We have hired an independent consultant to assist the committee with that matter.
Okay, so just indulge me here. What is a microwave? Microwave is line of sight?
Correct, line of sight.
Okay, so going back to one of the questions that I have, and and first off, I want to see a new police department. I think we needed one here probably for thirty years or better. And like everybody else said, is because we're late for the dance, we're paying for it now. And I also happen to agree with Mr. Gross that I would almost hit pause right now and say, how much would it cost to build a new one? Something that might be more efficient. There's all different ways to heat. I don't even hear him talking about any type of solar energy, any kind of green grants that might be available, radiant heating, I I don't know. I didn't even see the plans. I finally got this information because I had to go to the town clerk's office today, ask a copy of whatever document and she was kind enough to forward to me. It was thirteen hundred pages long. And to the best of my knowledge, you guys just possibly, correct me if I'm wrong, you guys just received that like a week ago. And and to try to understand and articulate any type of questions based upon a thirteen hundred page document is kind of questionable, number one. And number two, you're talking about a potential of forty million dollars. I think you guys should do your due diligence and hit the pause, read this, come back and then ask questions. So one of the things that I could never understand is the new antenna that was put up. What year was that put up?
Two thousand nineteen.
Okay, so four years ago. Why was it put where it is?
Go ahead. If I may, Mr. Comerfer, maybe I can help you along here. So the current system at the, that the town owns is a microwave based system, which is point to point. It's a five-site system. Four sites are in town. One site is out of town in North Branford. Each tower talks to all the others. It forms, if you will, a canopy over the top of the town. On that radio system are, is the police department, the fire department, Board of Education. Public Works and the public utilities can also come up on that system should they have to. So there could be at any one time, six or seven hundred different subscribers, people, individual radios, all talking at the same time on that system. It's how the council gave us permission to fund it, how it was designed.
I guess you need to stay closer to the mic.
And it works very well. So the tower that's at one thirty-five North Main Street will have to stay where it is or in close proximity. It could very well come here with a study. It could be moved here, but there needs to be a tower in the downtown area. You can't take, you can't just take that out. Where the confusion lies in um, what's necessary and what's needed now is very early on, and I think it was, I think Chief Entera mentioned it. We were told that possibly we could just have an antenna array on the rooftop of one hundred Barnes. No guarantees, but you're in close proximity to one of your other tower sites. And we believe that you might be able to get an array bolted to the roof essentially. When the study was done and more time was put into it, that was determined not to be true. Or I shouldn't say that. There was talk that now you possibly might need a tower at one hundred Barnes. The mayor was very concerned about hearing two different things, which we all were, which led to Allison Kapachinsky's comment a few minutes ago, us hiring a third party independent of anyone we've ever worked with before who specializes in microwave radio technology to look at one hundred Barnes. They have the longitude latitude of all of our other tower sites, how tall the towers are, where the antenna array is set on those towers. And what's been determined now is more than likely, we are going to need a one hundred foot tower at one hundred Barnes Road, where the antenna array will sit at roughly seventy feet because it needs to see the prime site in town, which is clear across town, up on the other side of, behind the Oakdale, essentially. So that's where the um, wide range, if you will, of what Allison said for funding for the radio system, because we just don't know yet what that final number is going to be. We know we need a tower. What the cost of that is, we can really probably estimate very closely. But once you bolt all the antenna array on top of the tower, that's really the true unknown piece. So essentially, when the building is built, the PD moves in and everything is functioning as it relates to the radio system, there will now be, it'll be a six tower site. It's five site now, it'll be six site, including one hundred Barnes. One thirty-five North Main will have to stay, or at least that tower will have to be in the proximate downtown area.
Thank you. Um, and that's my point. We've kicked this can for thirty years. In two thousand nineteen, we we put an antenna that's going to have to get moved. Because if the town decides to sell that building, the antenna's got to be moved. It's not just the antenna, it's the stuff that goes along with the antenna that's inside that building. Am I right, Chief Entera?
Yeah, there's contingencies for that, but it depends on who owns the building based on what we need. The tower can be moved to here. The, there can be also a generator that's in a box system that's put somewhere on the property. They can run communications there, we were told. Um, but it really doesn't, we can't tell until we know what's going into that building.
So when you listen to that same tape, it it this this gets addressed in there. Because in my opinion, I'm not going to put anybody's words in their mouth, but alludes to, there's really no benefit to sell the the building because it's going to potentially cost more to move the antenna. In two thousand nineteen, there was no reason to put the antenna there. I don't know who made the brilliant decision to put it there, knowing we've been talking about putting up a new police station for thirty years. So they also talked about potentially moving it maybe forty feet over to the fire department, which if they did it then, we wouldn't even be talking about moving that antenna. It's all about looking ahead into the future. And the same thing I just said, there's probably a lot of questions that I would have, have I had the time to read thirteen hundred pages of documents that were just, that were just given to you. So going back to your existing building, was the same architect that we have hired now, Mr., I believe it's Jakunski Humes, was that the same architect that has been on every single two thousand seven, two thousand nine, two thousand fifteen and now two thousand and nineteen? Same one every time?
I I know that he did do the two thousand seven. I don't recall the two thousand fifteen, that was before me, but um, yeah. He definitely did the two thousand seven and Jakunski Humes was present at that twenty nineteen walkthrough of one thirty-five North Main, so were other architects.
And who did we consult as far as putting that antenna in its in its current location?
I don't have that answer.
No one knows?
I don't have the answer. I mean, they were, it was a project through Motorola Systems and that was before my time, but.
Okay, a lot of this still bothers me. Do we know if there's PCBs? See, see, they, the former chief Wright said that he had, I don't know, ten architects walk through the building. Do we know what conditions exist in the existing building now? As far as hazardous material or PCBs that potentially are are men in uniform are are potentially being exposed to on a daily basis? Do we have any idea?
I personally do not. I mean, it's a thirty-seven year old building, so it's an older facility.
I'm talking about the armory where you guys are at right now.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. I mean, it's an older building, so I I don't know the answer to that question, but.
It's like over a hundred years old.
It was built in nineteen twenty and then redone in eighty-three or eighty-four. We moved it in eighty-six.
Um, it's just another piece in the puzzle because that's also should be reflective as to what this initial cost is. Personally, I would have thought that they would have kept that building and had a smaller satellite at this new place, brand new, and have the ability or the capacity to expand down the road. I think that if you probably weighed that out, it probably would still fit, especially in unknown. We don't know what we're going to do with that building. But I also believe that the Board of Education did potentially some kind of survey or feasibility and their number is all right, around six million dollars to convert that building, which which is another figure that's got to be thrown onto this pile too. One of the things that bothered me is Chief Wright first in two thousand nineteen stated that the the number was sixteen point one. And then he came back and with soft cost, I think it was twenty point three or thereabouts. Counselor Fishbein asked at that same meeting, so if we budget twenty-six million, we're good. Like, no, that's too high. Twenty-three is the number. Now, that was only a couple of years ago. And here we are approaching forty. Now, I don't know, because I don't, I'm not sure certain that you guys are familiar with any of the work that these guys did and the issues that came up in Old Saybrook with potential cost overruns. Does anybody want to speak to that?
About a project in Old Saybrook?
Yeah, police station.
Oh.
Same people.
Can you wrap up? We're well over time.
Well, I I don't want to be, I I think it was around eight hundred eighty-nine thousand dollar overrun and it was nowhere near the magnitude of this. Also that they had problems with the flooring. And I tried to get ahold of the chief. I've been waiting for two weeks now to get a response back because it was a laundry list of, or a punch list of issues that surfaced. They had problems. As a matter of fact, there was a, there was a statement from the 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 officers that since it first started, they had nothing but problems with the brand new HVAC system to that day. And then they ended up showing pictures of it. And they had leaky condensation in the ceiling tiles. They had problems with the flooring. I I can't go off of memory with all the problems that they had. And then I also believe that they had, Mr. Humes had a lawsuit against him for, or his company down in Westboro, I think it was called. Westboro for flooring issues. Now, these are questions that if I was on this committee, I'd be asking, I would have vetted them right from the rip because I would have said, what problems do you have? Just so that everybody's familiar with it. Did did this antenna, or does it have to go through planning and zoning before any of this gets approved?
No, it'd be handled by the siting council.
So it doesn't need planning and zoning approval?
I've confirmed that with the town planner, correct?
Because I I reached out to somebody on planning and zoning and I was on the opinion that they said, they never approved any kind of antenna with this, with this new project. Going forward, I I think that even now, to protect our our own police, that these tests probably should be done in in the in the old. tests probably should be done in, in, in the old existing building. I would still like to see the town pump the brakes on this, because as a taxpayer, a $40 million pill is kind of tough to swallow when it was sold to us at 23. I still would like to see a brand-new facility built for these guys, because they clearly deserve it. And at the end of the day, we probably could save money, and to know that no one entertained, from what I heard, any cost comparison, which, which is absurd to me. It just doesn't make sense then, and it does it now. And for anybody, in my opinion, to be able to sit there and vote on this tonight, and they can say that they can confirm that they read 1,300 pages of documents, and not one of you is going to have a question, excuse me, that there isn't more questions about this, it's troublesome. Thank you.
With that, I close the public hearing. You were, you were well over time when you were up here the first time. All right, I give you 45 seconds.
All right. Question is to the controller, what's our bond rating now?
AA1.
AA or triple?
AA1.
Will our, will the mayor approach our state legislators, one of them is sitting right here, to try and get us some money, bonding for the police station?
We're always open to funding. However, I don't think we can delay for the time of the, of the... Certainly if we can accommodate that at a later time, because I don't think there'd be a quick move to provide the town of Wallingford funding. We're always open to receiving funds from the state.
Again, that's a planning, should be, have already started the process with our state legislatures. North Branford just picked up $4 million in 2022 for funding, using Senator Cohen and using Candelaro out of North Branford. The two of them spearheaded it. I think Cohen's from Guilford, North Branford, and Candelaro's from Northford. And they just got $4 million for their police station, North Branford. It would be great to see the mayor asking, and that's through their town legislature branch, whoever headed it, spearheading at that with the state. So hopefully, the mayor could do the same thing. Thank you.
I call the public hearing closed. Is there a motion and a second that the proposed ordinance be adopted?
So moved.
Second.
By Laffin, seconded by Allenson. And I bring it back to the council for further discussion. Counselor Todd.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of questions came up during public comments, I wanted to follow up on. Number one, the, the grants, and Mr. Gross just brought it up, but I was thinking about it earlier too. Did we look at getting any grants? I'm not sure who exactly would look at that, but was that anything that was looked at before we, we set the bonding ordinance?
My knowledge, there are no grants for this purpose. If we were to receive anything, it would have to be a special appropriation of some kind, because I do not believe there are any grants for this purpose.
I did take periodic looks throughout design. There was hope at one time, but the funding was for something different.
And the other, the other question I had that came up, so it was stated earlier that if there were PCBs, they would be most likely in the caulking of the windows. But then I heard during the public comment, we're removing all of the windows. So if we're removing all of the windows, and that's potentially where the PCBs are, and I know in the bid documents, there was, it mentioned disposal, proper disposal of PCBs, is, is that what needs to be done then? So when the windows are removed, we are going to have somebody to do the proper disposal of the PCBs? Or we just throw them out?
So my understanding is that language in, I think that's in the project manual, is that, you know, they kind of cover everything. So if, you know, all contingencies, you know, and something happens during construction, there are PCBs, then they have to, of course, you know, dispose of them properly. But we are following all requirements for disposal for this project.
So how, how would they know that there are if we didn't do the testing? Basically, how, how would they know to dispose of the PCBs properly if we haven't tested to inform that contractor?
Yeah, it's included in their, in the event that something changes during construction and tests are conducted. That's, it's just kind of blanket language, that my understanding is that it's included in, you know, every project.
So then do they come in, whoever the, the demo company is, I assume, do they just come in and they're just going to put everything in a regular dumpster, I'll say, just for lack of a better term? Due to the fact that we haven't tested for PCBs? Or do they come in and say, "We need to know if there are PCBs, because if there are, then, you know, we're not authorized to dispose of them, and we need to have somebody who is deal with that."
So I mean, it's, it's my understanding, we've heard, you know, time and time again from the different consultants, that there is no required testing. And I do know, like, I, I've asked point-blank a couple times, that we're following every requirement when it comes to disposal of construction and demolition debris, and the answer is yes. So it just, it must not be a state requirement to classify that.
Okay, I guess my confusion just comes in. I, I understood all that if we were keeping them, but now I, I was under the impression we were keeping the windows, and so if it wasn't the caulk, it doesn't, you know, as long as it's not disturbed, it's not a problem. But then I heard that we are disposing of the windows, and so now when you agitate that, it does become a problem. So I just, I'm just curious what the process is then for the disposal? Are they...
I mean, something else to keep in mind is all the windows were replaced in 1990, which is, you know, 12-plus years after PCBs were banned. So, you know, I, I, based on the environmental reports we have received, the phase one for the site, there's, you know, there was no recommendation to test, and there were no real concerns based on the age of the building.
Okay, so they'll, they'll just come in and remove the windows as if there are none, because assuming there are none.
I believe so. Do you have anything to add, Jeff? Yeah? So I believe so.
Okay, I've just, I mean, do you see where the confusion comes in? Because it's been said several times, if they're, if they were there, they'd be in the caulk. And now we're saying we're removing the caulk.
Yeah, so it's kind of like, you know, I, I kind of equate a lot of things to bridge construction, which is what engineering department primarily does. And, you know, we have things, oh, if, if you encounter a boulder. We don't expect that, we didn't find that in the soil testing. However, of course, it's a possibility. We don't have, you know, x-ray vision. So it's just like a contingency that you keep in the project manual, so then, you know, it's, there's a roadmap to, if it is encountered, there's a roadmap how to, how to handle it.
But how would they know that they're encountering that? Is that something they would see? I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm just trying to understand the process. You know, if, because several times it was said that if, you know, if they're there, they're in the caulk, but as long as they don't mess with the caulk, then no problem. But then I heard that we're removing the caulk, so now maybe it does become a problem. For the disposal team, not, not for who's going to be in the building.
So I mean, OSHA does regulate everything when it comes to worker safety in buildings, and they don't require anything for PCBs. They require testing for asbestos and lead, which is, you know, why we included that, and we included the results in the project documents, so the workers have full knowledge of, of what they're possibly going to be encountering.
Yeah, and I, I did read that, and that's where I was, that's where my question comes in, because I did read that, you know, that it was possible, and one of the potential things that they could encounter would be disposal of asbestos and PCBs and lead. So I guess I'm just uncertain still how they, how they know how to handle it if we didn't inform them that they're there.
I mean, like, part of it is, like, with asbestos, I know demolition crews, I think it's like, it's the smaller tile, I think it's like eight-by-eight tile. You, you see it and you think like, yeah, that's probably asbestos. And so you kind of, just if you're in the field, you're, you're aware of that. But I think that's really mostly for asbestos.
So for example, in the case of asbestos, so we, we do testing, we say there's asbestos in the building, now we need to hire a special asbestos removal company to get rid of that, because you can't just go throw it in a dumpster. That, that would be how that would happen, right?
Well, it does have to be disposed of properly. I'm not sure if it's a different...
Yeah, I'm just using, yeah, sorry. But that's how we would know. So we would test, we would identify it, and then we would know to hire the special asbestos removal company.
Yeah, and that's all done for the protection of workers through OSHA, so...
Sure.
You know, there's, who, you know, maybe OSHA would be a good party to ask, you know...
Because that's, that's my question, if we're not testing for the PCBs, then we wouldn't be hiring the right company to dispose of them, and then it just seems like it should be the same process for all of, for all of those, and it sounds like it's not.
And really, it's just, and I do not mean to sound dismissive at all, but it's really because we are following OSHA regulations, so...
So OSHA doesn't require us to test for the PCBs, but it...
Correct.
But it, it did for the asbestos and the lead in order to remove those properly. All right. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Fishbine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, you know, when I first heard this thing about testing for PCBs, I was like, "No, just let them do the project." But I got to tell you, well, let me ask this question. Who determined what to sample?
Well, we hired the company, the testing company, to advise us on requirements. So they, we did a walkthrough of the building, and they came up with a number of tests that they thought they were going to need for asbestos and lead, and we went from there. And then, you know, they just, based on test results, they could have, you know, it's, it's a sampling plan, so...
Okay, but on, at the October 13 meeting, the discussion about PCBs, a portion of that was a recommendation that no further testing be done, right? So...
Or no, no testing, just to be clear, no testing be done, not further. There was no testing, so you can't have further testing without initial testing, right?
I agree, but I listened to the recording, so I, I agree with the semantics of that, that statement, right? So we can agree that the question at that time was whether or not to do some sampling and testing, right? So a recommendation was made at that time not to do that, and, and that was accepted, okay? So that was October 13. When the, when the original quote was put out, yeah. It says consultant to collect field samples as needed. So it's the steering committee that decided, based upon the recommendation of EnviroMed, whether or not to take the samples. So we, we discovered asbestos, right? So you probably walked through the building, you said, "Hey, that looks like asbestos. I, I recommend that we sample that," right? That's probably what happened.
Not quite, so it was really, they, they tested everything in the building, and that one area came back as positive. So they, they tested, I think it was, it was described to me as there's typical asbestos-containing materials, which could be tile glue, you know, there's, there's a litany of, of, you know, objects that could contain asbestos. And they went and tested at least one of every like material. So if there's pipe insulation, they tested that. If there's, you know, tile glue, they tested that. If this tile is different than that room, then they're going to test that too. So I don't have the numbers on me, I don't think of how many total tests, but it was, there were a lot.
Okay, but I'm looking at the progression, right? So on October 3, 13, when the meeting happens, somebody has already approved the lead sampling and the asbestos sampling, right? Why wasn't whether or not to test for PCBs determined at the same time that the release was made to do the asbestos and lead? Why was that an open question?
So when, when the committee discussed doing the environmental testing, we were okay with doing the required environmental testing. And so it came back that only asbestos and lead was required, so that's what we went ahead with. We meet monthly typically, and so, you know, a lot happens in that month. And so then we came back, and my update was that we were recommended not to test for PCBs, and that's what was discussed.
Okay, but it doesn't, it doesn't answer the question, why wouldn't you deal with whether or not to test for PCBs at the same time determination was made and the, and the release was done? You know, EnviroMed, go do this testing for lead and asbestos.
The recommendation that we received for testing for lead and asbestos aligned with what the committee was assuming would probably be required, so that's what we went ahead with. The PCBs was different. We didn't know if we were going to need testing for it. And so when we received word that we did not require testing for PCBs, that's what was brought back to the committee.
Okay, so it was merely because of the financial, the federal component, federal guidelines, it was still an open question, so the report came back on October 11, that it's not necessary, and therefore we recommend not to do that? Is that...
Well, we didn't know whether or not we were required to do the testing until we talked to EnviroMed and, and discussed that. So that was during the same time as the lead and asbestos inspection was happening.
Okay. So then I go to, once again, the project manual. And sort of along the lines with what Counselor Todd was talking about, on page 55, and it's, it's not the numbered page 55, because it's, it's comprised of many documents, but when I do the PD out, it says 55 of 512. It says, "If reasonable precautions will be inadequate to prevent foreseeable bodily injury or death to persons resulting from a hazardous material or substance, including and not limited to asbestos or PCBs encountered on the site by the subcontractor, the subcontractor shall, upon recognizing the condition, immediately stop work in the affected area and promptly report the condition to the contractor in writing." So that's an affirmative obligation by the subcontractor, not just for asbestos, but also PCBs. So, you know... How is the subcontractor, I mean, are we requiring the subcontractor to have some level of education in, in this area so that they can notice it and comply with what is intended here? And I, I see, was it Jeff?
Yeah, Mr. Counselor. So that statement that you've read, you said it's in multiple locations throughout the project manual. I am familiar with that statement, because I authored it. It was generated for a previous project, a school project, and we went to develop the trade packages for your project here. It was inadvertently copied over and included in the trade package scopes. That statement that is consistent in multiple packages is not applicable to the Wallingford Police Department.
And that was discussed during scope reviews, so the subcontractor is aware of that as well.
Okay, so we asked in contemplation for this meeting for the bid document. This is part of what we were given. So am I to understand that this document has been altered, or is there a, some document that expressly strikes, you know, that's to be used with this?
Jeff, do you document the scope reviews?
We go through detailed scope reviews, as we mentioned. So during that scope review, it was corrected that that statement was an administrative copy into the trade package and not applicable.
Were there any other portions of what was given to us to review that is not applicable?
I believe you were given the full trade package project manual, along with addendum, drawings, and specs, so there is no further information beyond the eventual contract that we issue to the subcontractors after approval.
So the exchange about paying no attention to that portion of the project manual is, was it oral, or is it written?
It would be eventually written as an attachment to the subcontract agreement, which we, of course, cannot issue until we have approval this evening.
Okay, because once, you can't enter into the contract unless you have money, and so on and so forth.
Correct, yes.
So I'm to expect, should this pass, that there will be a package that is the final approved package by the steering committee, the town, and whomever is doing the particular work.
We have individual trade contracts that we will execute after approval, and we certainly can provide copies of those to the town.
Okay, thank you, thank you for the exchange. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have one other, if I may. You know, in the, there was a reference to a domino effect with regard to, you know, it appears if there is going to be this testing, that it may create a domino effect. And I guess I can assume what that means, but what was meant by that?
So my layman understanding of it is... So my layman understanding of it is, I'll start with asbestos, right? If you do the test for asbestos and it's positive, it's handled a certain way. So the testing really stops there. It's just, that's how it's, you know, handled by the workers. When it comes to PCBs, my understanding, layman understanding, is that the sampling plan that, I believe, I believe it's the EPA that dictates how PCBs are sampled for and if it's required or not. And if you get a positive PCB test, then they tell you what you have to test around it, and that goes to, I believe, in some instances, it would be, you know, removing structural wall and the brick facade of the building, soil testing and whatnot. That's just part of the sampling plan if you get a positive test. And you're required to, kind of, once you open the can of worms, you know, then you have to proceed through that whole process. So that's my layman understanding of it. I'm not an expert in this field, however, that's my information that I have.
And that was your understanding, sitting on the steering committee, once that was discussed? I mean, that was my takeaway as well, I didn't know if it was...
Yeah, that was my understanding, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, seeing no further hands on the council, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Allenson?
Yes.
Carmody?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Tatta?
No.
I'm just taking a vote here.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Zervoni?
Yes. I declare the ordinance adopted. Thank you to the members of the committee for your hard work leading up to this and your work tonight.
Thank you for your support.
There being no further business on the agenda, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, I declare the meeting adjourned.